It is 6:30, and so we will call the regular board meeting of the East Bay Charter Township to order, and with that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call attendance.
Cook.
Here.
Walters.
President.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Cortez.
Here.
M. Cortez.
Here.
Lyle.
Here.
Friend.
Here.
Okay, and the agenda before you, we have the regular consent calendar. It does include an introduction to the Traverse City Light and Power Franchise Ordinance, as well as a letter of support for the Grand Traverse Band. Also then, in regular business before the board, we have the TART Three Mile Trail presentation, Housing North presentation, consideration of a zoning amendment 2-21, which is a conditional rezoning, and then the emergency service budgets for ambulance, fire, and police. Is there, is everybody fine with that agenda? Would anyone like anything changed from the board? Okay, well, the consensus will move forward with that agenda. Is there any conflict of interest for anything on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward to public comment. We do have rules for public comment, they're pretty standard across most boards, about three minutes for public comment, and we don't take you off with a cane or anything like that, but we do try to hold you to that. If anyone would like to make public comment, please feel free to step up to the podium and, and address the board with your thoughts. I was serious about the cane, we don't do that, so, okay. So, seeing none, we'll move forward to correspondence. In your packet, you'll see you have Hammond Road Corridor memo from the Planning and Zoning Department, that's a very interesting read, it's excellent work by our director, and that will go to the Planning Commission for their consideration, as well as to Garfield Township's Planning Commission. I appreciate my colleague Chuck Corn's participation in that as well. You also have the 2020 East Bay Water Quality Report, that is passed, that is approved with good measure, and the Treasures Report from June 2021, and also, we have had some letters come in, you have had some forwarded to you via email, and also, a NORTA letter has come in and was in the subsequent packet, as well as on your desk tonight, is one from the Land Conservancy, and those were related to the Three Mile Trail extension. Okay, from there, we'll go on to the consent, consent agenda, and Anne, would you go over the consent agenda, please?
Sure will, as I find my little thing I'm supposed to say, there we go. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adapting the consent calendar. This evening, you have two sets of minutes, July 12, 2021, regular meeting minutes, and August 3, 2021, special meeting minutes, recommend approval. From the General Fund, check numbers 16372 through 16439, with voided checks 16372, 16390, and 16426, in the amount of $112,771.2. The Emergency Fund, check numbers 4709 through 4740, the amount of $25,584.96, check number 4688 was previously approved. The Receiving Fund, check numbers 2809 through 2816, the amount of $251,091.74. The Escrow Fund, check numbers 1749 through 1756, the amount of $10,547.9. Two payrolls, the first July 4 through July 17, 2021, check number 7218 through 7222, total $45,593.84. And the payroll from July 18 through July 31, check number 7223 through 7230, total $50,477.88. Total payroll, $96,071.72. Total amount paid, $496,066.53. Also have proposed budget adjustments, BA 2021-7 through 2021-13, and two other items, introduction to Traverse City Light and Power Renewal of Franchise Ordinance, and Grand Traverse Band Letter of Support.
Okay, excellent, thank you, and just reemphasizing that that is an introduction to the Charter Township of East Bay Ordinance granting franchise to Traverse City Light and Power Department to transact local business for a period of 30 years. So with that, does anybody from the board want anything removed from the consent calendar? Yes, Mindy?
Um, the budget adjustments.
Sure. One of, any of them or all of them?
Let me just pull the whole thing.
Okay, that's fine. And we'll put those at the end. You'll have to keep me honest and remember that we have those at the end there. Okay, and so with that, we will ask the public if there's anything that they wish to have pulled from the consent calendar, and seeing none, we'll bring that back to the board for a possible motion regarding the consent calendar, as, as given to you with the exception of the budget amendments.
I make the motion to approve the consent calendar without the budget adjustments.
Support.
Okay, a motion is made by Bartlett, and there's support by Walters, any further discussion? Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Matt Cortez.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yes.
Sue Cortez.
Yes.
Friend. Yes. Okay, with that, we will move on to our first subject, which is the TART Three Mile Trail, and we'll introduce Julie Clark, who is here. Julie, if you'd come up and introduce who you brought with you, and, and go forward with your presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, it is my pleasure to be with you this evening. With me is Elizabeth Calcutt, who is our project manager for the Three Mile Trail Extension, and Kevin Groelecki, who has, is with Goslin Zuback, and did the engineering and design work for us. So I'll be brief, and just give you a, a quick project update, and kind of catch us up, because it was about a year ago, I think, before, yeah, a year ago, it's, 2020 is a blur, that we came before you on this very project. So we're excited about where we are tonight, and delighted to share a proposed preferred alignment with you. So just, because I love history, and I always want to, you know, where we were and why we're here, back in 2006, that first leg of the Three Mile Trail was built, it was part of the road reconstruction of Three Mile between Parsons, or South Airport Road, sorry, all the way up to US 31, so that happened. We expected, you know, to keep going, and in 2008, we thought we'd have a Three Mile Trail done as part of the next road reconstruction project. Well, as you all know very well, and anybody who's traveled Three Mile knows, there was no future road reconstruction. And so we went in fits and starts, working with the Road Commission and East Bay Township on where would the Three Mile Trail connector go. A sort of perfect storm happened. First, Safe Routes to School really got going, and NORTA had a huge outpouring of support from the schools in the area, four better ways to get around in East Bay, you guys really picked it up, and did a, a letter of support, and put that forward, got that in motion, if you will. Then the east-west corridor study happened, and that really took a bit of a pause for us to see what the Road Commission was planning on how to handle additional traffic and mobility issues. And then that third thing that occurred, which was really the genesis of this project, and that was when the Conservancy purchased Mitchell Creek. So we had gotten word from Glenn Chown when that was happening, and he said, Julie, would this be a way that we might be able to extend the trail? And we said, gosh, maybe. And so that's when we came to you and said, hey, TART, East Bay Township, NORTA, and the Regional Land Conservancy would like to look at how we might connect Three Mile to this area of East Bay. And then at that same time, Safe Routes to School was also going through the planning process that I know you guys have been very much part of. So the stars aligned, sometimes if you wait long enough, that, that tends to happen. So what we did is, we had a scope, and we knew, okay, we know where the trail ends, and we know some connections we want to get to. So working with Claire and Beth, we also looked at where would those feeders go? How would people get around this particular region of East Bay? So we didn't really go outside the dotted line boundary that you saw, but it was trying to figure out where could a connection be made. We knew we wanted both transportation and recreation, we knew we wanted it to fit in the character of the area, and we knew that people really wanted to be able to get to the TART network from East Bay Township, both now and the growth that was to come. So we launched a very intensive public outreach process, and that was, I think, represented best on a very cold and rainy October day in 2020, when people came out to the Grand Traverse Academy, I think we had 50-plus people there who intentionally came to speak about the Three Mile Trail, and to show what they wanted connected. And we also did online public surveys, all of this, by the way, is available on the website if you really want to go into details, but we had a good showing for the public survey as well. And in between all that, between the winter and summer of 2021, we had different stakeholder meetings. So those were both the partners with the Conservancy, NORTA, TART, and East Bay, but also different advocate groups, so all the schools were invited and they participated, groups like Cherry Capital Cycling, and the Watershed Center, and Track Club, people who might be using the trail, or have a very interest in how the trail was, you know, laid out. We had those folks come in to share their vision and values. And then Goslin Zuback, who I'm going to actually ask Kevin to come up in a second just to speak to it, went through, then worked on design. So before we got into detailed design, we wanted to hear from the community, and so that's what we did. And what we heard back was a need for connectivity. People want to get places, whether it's to this township, or the library, or the shopping center across the street, plus the schools, of course, and they wanted to do it safely. And that was clearly a big concern for us, that's why Three Mile Trail doesn't exist today, because you couldn't build it safely in that right-of-way. The other thing that we heard, which was really a wake-up call for us, and really good information, is that a lot of people would be looking to get on the trail from the south of Hammond. So it wasn't just north coming down, it was also a lot of people here, south going up, which really fed well into the Safe Routes to School discussions. I'm going to ask Kevin to come up here, but like I said, before we put Kevin to work, we wanted to hear the vision and values of the community, so we got that input. We also needed to know what the given constraints were, and what the opportunities were by partners, in particular, the Regional Land Conservancy. If we're talking about putting a trail through their land, we needed to know what was, what was a go, and what was a no-go from the beginning. So we worked closely with them to make sure that the final alignment that was presented to you tonight, and brought out before the public, could actually work, same with some private landowners that we were talking to as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin now, and he's going to go briefly, see, did you see how talk I found? Oh, I tried to get it in five minutes. Kevin's going to do the same thing, maybe he'll have more breath. So he's just going to go through some of the design details.
Thank you, Julie. Julie mentioned, my name is Kevin Krogolecki, I'm a landscape architect for Goslin Zuback Engineering. We had the opportunity with the TART stakeholders on the, as she mentioned, the engineering components of this, the layout and the design. So we did a, put a conceptual alignment together, also discussed some, we'll cover some crossings on Hammond and Three Mile, put together opinions and costs for this conceptual layout as best as we could at this time, the information we had, as well as some of the maps and graphics that we'll go through right now. So to dig in a little bit more on the trail routing, we have a little blow-up here. Again, you know, as Julie mentioned, our first major land stakeholder to deal with was the Land.
Kevin, I need you to talk into the mic, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So these green areas on the map represent, we call, trail corridor partners. This large area, starting from, I'll go from north to south of the trail, connecting at the existing Three Mile Trail where that dead ends on the east side of Three Mile. So we come down, this trail consists of both boardwalk and asphalt trail components typical that you see around the TART trail system right now. The asphalt trail that we started out with, continuing down from Three Mile, goes out and down to the east into a wetland area, or let's call it a lowland area, and in these lowland areas, we utilize this boardwalk system to prevent, you know, masquerading and disturbance of natural areas. The whole routing of the trail is meant to avoid as much clearing as possible through tree areas, and avoid wetland areas as well, with, in accordance and understanding of this land, and the environmental sensitivity of some of these areas. So instead of the trail going directly dag of east, we had to avoid some definitely wet and thick areas, so we ran it east, and that orange, which represents the boardwalk, to a point where we come out to the south, behind, closely behind the existing Mitchell Creek Golf Course property, and that approach out there. So that trail would actually go on the backside of that, knowing, being able to visit that area, you've got some amazing views to the east, and this trail going through this property, the whole section, really takes advantage of, I guess, some added benefit of that land, you know, seeing some of the nature out there, being able to provide educational opportunities for some of the schools that may be down there right now. We all know that active trail activities that you can do in biking, running, and rollerblading, but some of these, this really takes advantage of the passive activities that can be available in these natural areas. So going to the south still, on the Mitchell Creek Meadows, nature-preserved property, an asphalt trail goes all the way down to Vanderlip Road. At that point, we'll be crossing Vanderlip Road with ADA crossings on each side, right now, that's a gravel road. But as the Alta Vista development continues to work through its phases, we believe, we understand the last phase there is going to require the paving of Vanderlip, up to that Vanderlip Road, access to that development, at that time, it would be a paved crossing for this trail across Vanderlip. We got Vanderlip in the bottom there, I'm going to switch down to the southern portion of this, you can see Vanderlip at the top as well. Going south, we plan the trail to be on the Alta Vista Development property, within their 25-foot west property line setback, so we'll be hugging that property line, that's the plan for right now, unless we get in there and see some major obstacles. We do have talked to the GTA Academy, we'd like to keep the trail off their property as much as possible, and definitely separate it from school grounds as much as we can, but if there's some requirement for us to use a portion of the property, we'll obviously talk to them, and go through the proper channels, and the boards there as well, too. So right there, we show that purple line, that would be easement on either of those properties all the way to Hammond. Once we get to Hammond, we'd like to get a crossing across Hammond there, we see the need for that, and it connects to the Cherry Knoll East Middle School property to the south, there's an access drive right there where buses come in and out. So a crossing right there, we have that represented right now on a map, we'd love to see it, it sounded like in the public comment that that was highly desired for crossing in this area. Discussion with the Road Commission on this, there's pros and cons, all the different types of crossings that we can do, but we have it on there right now, we think it's important to keep there, so that it stays in the discussion with the Road Commission, and any sort of improvements to Hammond in this area, or in that intersection, so continuing to be developed and discussed with them. So, and again, another crossing that we have on Three Mile Road, we showed two up and down Three Mile, one at the north, where there would be a parking area, a trailhead for this Three Mile Trail. Right now, there is a flat area in the woods where we showed that P, that trail parking, and there is a driveway access there right now, we'd have to turn that into a commercial driveway, and plan for a gravel parking lot there, to 15 to 20, 20 cars or so like that, so a safety trail. A crossing at Three Mile in that area would connect the residential, the development to the west, so there would be quite a few people, we envision using that to access the trail on that point. Again, you know, maybe a surface-grade crossing there, we know that Safe Routes to School has a crossing planned on Three Mile, south of there, so maybe utilizing that, timing if that happens first, replicate that as a treatment, a crossing treatment to the north here as well. The other crossing to the south connects to the Mitchell Creek property, where they will build a parking trailhead themselves on their own property, it's not proposed as part of this project, or project, but we know that they want to have some sort of access from there to this trail, or trail networks within their property, if that happens before this project. So, you know, there are a lot of great landscapes that things going to, going through, it's definitely going to be a unique trail system for this area, it goes through several different types of landscapes, and the educational benefits that this would be able to provide, and the experiential benefits that this would be able to provide is much different than an asphalt trail along the railroad corridor, along the road right-of-way, too. So it's going to be a unique general trail for this area for the township, and expanding the TART, or the TART Trail Network in this area, so. Just a couple examples of what the trail treatments would look like, on the left side, you see the asphalt trail 10 to 12 feet wide, raised up through the areas that allow us to do that. When we get into more sensitive areas, we utilize a boardwalk system that you do see in some areas around here, which will vary, but will provide access for safety vehicles, and be rated per ASCO standards. We use a typical, or a helical pile combination sort of system to minimize impacts in these areas, unless some of that natural sensitive areas regurgitate under the trail. And this is an example of kind of the experience that you'd see in this area, obviously, the active running, biking, hiking, advantages here for nature viewing, plant, insects, animal identification, outdoor classrooms, again, right by all the schools, I think it could be very beneficial, and, you know, working through Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy land, align right with some of their concepts, and their land preservation activities, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. So as you can see, it's, it really was designed with those community values, front and center, recreation, transportation, education, were all very important. We have had ongoing conversations with both the Road Commission, Conservancy, as well as Alta Vista, as easement holders, and people are really excited about the opportunities that this potential trail will provide. So the route presented tonight is, we, we did do assessments of, you know, going along Three Mile and other, other places where we could, but the, the route through the Conservancy's property is pretty ideal, and made it much easier to find a preferred alternative, you don't really get this, but once in a lifetime. Really, what was done tonight is at a conceptual level only. So Kevin spoke to some very specific designs. We had to have something to work with in terms of costs and also thinking through what would go through the Conservancy's property and make connections. But the next step is design engineering, and that's where you get into the details. That's really where you spend the time working with Township and working with Claire and the partners to nail this in and really dial it in. What does a crossing here look like? What does the trail? Where exactly does it go? So we're at a concept level tonight, and that's where we needed to start in order to keep moving. So then we look into, you know, design engineering, which is another, frankly, a couple-year process, to get ready for construction. And that's, there are many, many more steps in between, but tonight is letting us know if this is a preferred alternative that you guys would like to continue to explore. And we're, Kevin or I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Now you, I see in here we have the minutes from the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission. Did they pass a similar resolution, or could you tell us about your presentation to them?
It was a little bit more fast. I talked a little faster, ran out of breath a little bit quicker, but yes, Parks and Rec and Planning, who have been updated along the way as we've gone in tandem with Safe Routes to School, both did pass unanimous motions of support. Mindy has been on our Stakeholder Committee throughout the process, and like I said, we have gone to planning to make sure, as we went through this process, that we were in step with what East Bay Township would be. And I would be greatly remiss if I didn't tell you how wonderful Beth and Claire were throughout this process, to make sure that we were having really informed conversations with the Safe Routes to School folks, the Road Commission, all of us kind of working together, given that we're in that same sandbox. Great communication, and Claire's leadership throughout this process was just really wonderful.
That's kind of you, Julie. Thank you. So just to be clear, this resolution, like the other two, at the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission, seeks to have the Township support the Three Mile trail extension and the conceptual plan for non-motorized connections in the Hammond and Three Mile corridors as presented, and recommends the Township continue to work with the partners to seek funding for engineering and that step. So we're just, at that point, we're taking another step.
That's right. We go in baby steps around here.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I guess one thing I'd have a comment on, and I'm glad to see that we're talking about putting money away for maintenance. I know we've had discussions over the years, but I'm glad to see that's included in it.
Yeah, and we have a really good example of that in the Boardman Lake Loop Trail, where that was our first partnership between the municipality, TART, County, City, Township, where we have set aside an endowment for that trail. And we look to replicate something similar here if that's what you want to do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just one question. You mentioned something about emergency vehicles. Is that what you're saying, that the boardwalks would support?
Yeah.
Any kind of vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they were built to MDOT standards, they absolutely would have to support an ambulance. We have several examples along the existing trail where they're rated for a pickup truck, but not for an ambulance. But if we touch MDOT money, they're going to be built real sturdy.
Okay, well, good. I just heard it and I just got surprised.
Yeah, and the nice thing is, too, we have a lot of options through our emergency services with some other types of vehicles that they have as well, too, correct, gentlemen?
Very used to going on trails to get people that don't require an ambulance. You should see what this man can do.
I really like this concept. As you know, I've been a bit critical of moving down Three Mile without the road being built. And so this gives you a chance to move forward, and I like that. I'm still a bit critical about crossing Hammond Road, especially with young kids.
Me, too.
Young kids. We've had some tragedies around here. We had one just this past week. So, but the concept of the trail is wonderful. I really do like the idea, plus being inside where it's more, have more view and whatever. So it's great.
Trustee Cortez, you can also, one of the things that this alignment helps us do is get ready to have further discussions with the Road Commission. They have a hard time reacting to an idea, and a much better time when we have an endpoint to discuss, so then we can get to details. We want it so a six-year-old can cross safely. We're with you.
One of the things I want to point out is, this has really reverberated in the responses that we've received from the master plan survey. We had a lot of people who really supported trail network within the township, so this fits right in with that, so I really appreciate that. And I want to thank Julie because Julie is just a whirlwind of energy and ideas and just makes things happen, and I really appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure working on this with you. If there are other comments or questions, or if there's a motion in support of this resolution?
What's the resolution number?
Fifteen.
Twenty-one.
Fifty? Twenty-five?
One-five.
One-five, okay. I would make that motion, approve resolution, support for East Bay Three Mile Trail Extension, Resolution 2021-15.
Support. Okay, there's been a motion by Lyle and support by Walters. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by his, oh, wait, resolution. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Lyle?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Matt Cortez?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Suzanne Cortez?
Yes.
And Bren.
Yes. Three unanimous resolutions from three boards in East Bay Township. Wow. Nice job, Julie.
It's really a pleasure and looking forward to continuing to come here and keep you updated all along the way.
Yeah. Terrific. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Housing North. Claire, could you come up and introduce Yarrow, please? Oh, you guys are working on that today?
Okay. So we have Yarrow Brown here, who's the Executive Director of Housing North. And Housing North is a somewhat newly formed nonprofit, but they represent 10 counties, say, 10 counties of Networks Northwest, and just work on housing solutions. So she's going to be talking a little bit about a campaign that they're working on, Homes for Our Future. They've come before quite a few different boards and commissions, local units of government in Northwest Michigan, just seeking this resolution of support. One thing that I was excited about that is included in this is there's a housing-ready checklist that the Township completes, so you'll see included in your packet. I just went ahead and started that checklist, going to take a look at kind of where the Township is in terms of zoning ordinances, in terms of other types of policies that support housing, in terms of our master plan. So I think that this, it's a nice tool as we move forward with updating the master plan and the zoning ordinance. We don't have to, all of the actions might not be appropriate for East Bay Township, but it gives us some really good ideas and starting points for, you know, tangible changes to our zoning ordinance. It's similar to what we're working with with redevelopment-ready communities. It's a checklist of things that we can be working with and best practices, so with that, I'll go ahead and begin with Yarrow.
Hi, Yarrow, how are you?
I'm good. Thanks for having me today. I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I know you have a copy of my PowerPoint, but I do just want to give you a brief introduction to Housing North. So as Claire said, we were formed about, almost three and a half years ago now, with Networks Northwest and Housing Solutions Network, Roadreach Charities, and the Frye Foundation are our main funders right now. We have three legs of our stool that we focus on, and we do cover the 10 counties of Northwest Michigan, as well as your county. So our mission is to build awareness, influence policy, expand capacity so communities can create solutions that meet their unique needs. Our vision is that Northwest Michigan will be a place where families of all income levels can find homes that are safe and affordable. So I'm just going to briefly go over the three legs of our stool as we refer to them today and answer any questions that you have. Just briefly talking about the need, we did a target market analysis in partnership with Networks Northwest in 2019, projecting numbers for 2020. Now, this was pre-pandemic, and so we do feel like these numbers are probably even higher than they were estimated, but it showed, as you can see, Grand Travers showing the bulk of the need in our region. Most of the need is for rental units, but we also have a need for homeownership units. And in general, we say that the need is for people making less than two, I'm sorry, for homes that are for sale less than $200,000 per year, or rents that are $1,000 or less. But we do have a need across the income spectrum and the type of unit. All this information is available on our website. There are detailed target market analysis for the whole county and then a summary that you can download. So part of the work that we're doing at Housing North is a communications toolkit, and we launched about a year ago a public awareness campaign called Homes for Our Future. We learned that that's confusing for some people, so we're transitioning out of calling it Homes for Our Future, but really focusing on what we need for communities, and that is to become housing-ready. So in these toolkits are used and available for people to learn about how their communities can become housing-ready, and I know, working with Claire, that you're already doing that in your community, so thank you. So what we did is we went around, or we have been going around to units of government, asking for endorsements for this campaign, basically saying that you're committed to your community becoming housing-ready and doing what you can to support the needs and meet the goals that you've identified in your community. So on our website, these two, these are available. One, I think, is in your packet, and Claire did fill out the housing-ready checklist for your community, so thank you. I wanted to just highlight the, there are 11 units of government that have already endorsed the campaign, and they're on the screen here. We had a goal of getting 10 in the last year, so we made it to 11. But we're also still, we have 139 units of government in our community, so we're going around to anyone that will have us and just trying to spread the information and ask for support because the need is so great in our community. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the capacity leg of our stool, but this also has to do with our communications, which is a housing-ready program. So right now, we have one staff person full-time in Charlevois County, and you can see on the slide that there's a partnership between two foundations, as well as four units of government, who support this position for up to three years. So Steve Schnell was actually our first full-time employee we hired back in March. Yes, he started right when everything changed, and so did I. And then we are now hiring full-time for a position in Emmett County. We're hoping to roll out this program in each of our communities as there's an interest, and really what they are, are boots on the ground, working in your community on all things housing, supporting your staff and your community. We've seen a lot of success with this program, and really, they're there to work with all the units of government and community to address all things housing. I won't spend too much time on this, but we do feel like it takes all of us to get our communities ready and to be housing-ready, and this position is hosted by Housing North, but it is in your community. We're just starting to talk about this for Grand Travers County, so I just wanted to make you aware, but right now, Manistee County and Leland County is where we're actively fundraising for this position. The other thing I just wanted to mention is our policy initiative, so we do have a focus on advocacy for housing solutions. And in late 2020, we partnered with four groups, four organizations, the Michigan Municipal League, Home Builders Association, Grand Rapids Chamber, and then Housing North, to form what's called the Housing Michigan Coalition. There's about five pillars that we focus on for our policy. I won't go into all the detail, but basically, what we're hoping to do is bring more incentives and tools to our Northwest Michigan region for housing, which, as you probably know, there aren't a lot of resources. There's one program, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, but we often are not eligible for many of our housing projects that we need with that program. So we really wanted to have a concerted effort that is bipartisan, bicameral, that's focusing on a package of bills. The website is here, and I recommend you go there just to learn about what the Housing Michigan Coalition is up to. We do have a package of five bills that were passed in the Senate and are moving on to the House. A couple of those bills, I won't go into all the detail, but they do include expanding the neighborhood enterprise zones, allowing payment in lieu of taxes for projects that don't require state or federal subsidy, as well as an employee housing tax credit. So if you are interested and want to learn more, please sign up. And then we're also, we'll put out a call to action through Housing North when it does move into the House for any support. I think I already mentioned this, but basically, we feel this is a shared challenge. There's many reasons for the housing gap, and there's no silver bullet. So this is one focus area, which is policy solutions. The last thing I just want to touch on briefly is capacity and technical assistance. So this is where Housing North can help communities that don't have a planner, like Claire, who's awesome, or you do need some additional support. We really encourage landbank partnerships. That's one of the tools that we have in our toolbox, as well as looking at ways that we can raise capacity for housing through a housing fund. And then one tool that we're piloting in Charlevois, the city of Charlevois, is a deed restriction to ensure year-round occupancy. So that's just a principal residency deed restriction, and that was a goal of the city of Charlevois. We're also piloting that program in the city of Petoskey. And then the last thing I'll just mention are community land trusts, which are also a tool that can lock in affordability long-term. If you want to learn about any of these tools, there's a lot of information on our website, and then we host a housing summit in October, on the 21st, where a lot of this will be made available, and we'll have workshops. Just want to highlight one new tool that has come out. Now, this is, excuse me, I'm not an expert on this at all, but we're calling it Landbank 2.0, so where you can use your landbank in Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to help subsidize housing. This is a new tool that's being rolled out. We just had a workshop on Friday, and I can certainly share some more information with you if you are interested. But it does allow this tool to be used for single-family housing, as well as rentals and apartments. And then, as Claire mentioned, we have our housing-ready toolkit and just some ways that you are already addressing your zoning, but these are just a few things I wanted to highlight, looking at smaller units, accessory dwelling units, ways we can streamline some of our housing opportunities and look at different flexibilities, such as parking lot requirements, or looking at multiple families. Just kind of changing the way we look at housing to be able to get more creative for solutions to meet the high need or high demand. I also just wanted to mention Missing Middle Housing. This is a really good resource. There's a book and a website that you can learn more about, where you can design houses that look like a single-family home, but have a lot more units inside, or getting creative with the use of that space on your existing lots. So we do have tools right now that local units of government can use. I highlighted some of these and just want you to consider all of them, but really, we want to, you know, mention that there are opportunities to include set-aside units for those experiencing the most need, so those below 30% of AMI, or looking at partnerships with different nonprofits or landbanks or authorities and redevelopment authorities, and then just really looking at ways that we can ensure affordability and perpetuity on projects, so locking in that affordability so that it will always be affordable. And I should say, when I say affordability, we're talking 30% of the area median income, so that's across the income level. So trying to encourage people to pay up to 30%, not much more, for their housing. And in our region, on average, we pay 50% or more to live and work. So just trying to keep it into perspective so our housing is attainable. We do have a few goals for Housing North, and we really want your support to help these bills pass the House, and really just encouraging everybody to get involved with housing if possible, using our communications toolkit, and then just looking at ways that the American Rescue Plan funds could be put towards some housing solutions in our communities. So we're working with communities to identify what those look like, and I'm happy to talk with you further about that. And then the last thing I'll mention is that we do have a partnership structure where we can support some of your housing goals and needs. And the Village of Calcasca was recently one of our first strategic partners, so this is available if you are interested in partnering with us, and there's more information on our website and how we can support you and your housing needs. So I just wanted to thank you again for having me. See if there are any questions. And this is my contact information. We do have two websites. One is Homes for Our Future, which is the public awareness campaign. There's a lot of information out in that, and then our housingnorth.org. And soon, they will be one.
Thank you, Yarrow. And again, you are looking for passage of a resolution that, for the Township to endorse the Homes for Our Future campaign and agrees to engage in the housing-ready checklist process. Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Yarrow?
I do, just a couple of questions. So I'm glad you addressed the market analysis from 2019, because I think a lot of things have changed from the pandemic and maybe different types of demographics that are moving here for remote work, or whatever the case may be, probably further stressing the issue at hand. But I had a couple of questions. So looking at the target market analysis that was done in 2019, there's some numbers associated with what is estimated through 2025 for Grand Travers County at about 1,600 owner-occupied homes and 4,000 rental units. I guess my question, I'm trying to understand where these owners and renters are coming from. Are these coming from outside of the county? Are these people that are moving out from, you know, maybe moving out from their parents and occupying like younger couples? What, who are these people?
So it's both. It's people who are currently living and working here and in need of a home, but it's also those who would move here if there was a job or a place for them to live. So it does capture both.
Okay.
And it is, as you pointed out, there are a lot more people moving here in the last year because of the remote work.
Right.
These numbers do need to be updated, and they're probably shifted quite a bit.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, is there a basis on, we've got numbers for the units, but is there a basis on like average household size that that would equate to? Is this one and a half people per household or two people per household?
That's a really good question. I believe it's on average a four-person household, but she did not break but they did not break it down in that level of detail when we did this study. They're, they're, you know, sort of estimates and projections.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Yeah. When, for example, Frankfurt just recently did a study, they did their own target market analysis specifically to see what Frankfurt needed. And it showed they needed single units and that was the demand. So this is sort of, I guess, general to kind of gauge where we need to start. And I think one of the interesting things, and we don't have a lot of tracking of rental data, but it did show we have a much higher demand for rental units than homeownership. And, you know, I think that, you know, is just kind of speaks to a lot of different things. But, you know, we don't know exactly, I would like more details about what that means.
Yeah. I mean, I would too. I guess I'm thinking about the cost of a mortgage payment versus rent. And maybe people that if you could get the cost of the mortgage payment down and the cost of construction down to build a home, they'd be more apt to buy the home. So it's not necessarily driven by whether they want to own a house or rent. It's what they can afford and what the market kind of allows. So.
Exactly. And not everybody wants to own a home.
Yeah, sure, sure. Understood. So that would be at four people per unit roughly. I mean, that's 20, 22,000 additional people in five years. Seems like a lot of people, but I guess that's a potential for the high end.
Yeah. And it's for those, you know, I guess employers and, you know, job growth. It includes, you know, the estimates of who would move here if there was a job.
Have you tried to drive around this town lately?
Oh, yeah. No, I have. Every street's shut down around here, but there's a lot of people around.
I mean, I think we had somebody from the academy come in and said they lost teachers because they couldn't find a house.
Sure, sure. No, I guess I understand that it's an issue. I'm just trying to understand the, kind of the math behind this. There wasn't a whole lot of, I guess this was done maybe by a third party? The numbers were put together by some land?
Yeah, it was done by land use, US. And there were numbers in 2014 and then we worked with them again in 2019.
Okay.
To sort of update that.
The one thing I didn't see, I guess, addressed here, but maybe, maybe it's something you can incorporate in the future. Maybe you have addressed and I shouldn't see it in any of the presentations. I guess from what I've seen, there's, there's also kind of to coincide with the cost of housing here. There's kind of a shortage of contractors to build things. So I don't know if that's being addressed to maybe incentivize more contractor startups or more, you know, smaller, smaller contractors to be in the area to support the need here.
Yeah, it's definitely on our mind and why we're partnering with home builders. They do have a whole program, you know, getting, getting the word out about the need for the construction trade, but certainly through our partners, we're doing that.
Yeah. And then I guess the last thing, I know you'd mentioned somewhere in here that y'all had, like you'd talked about some bills that in Lansing that you were trying to, I don't know what the content of those bills are. But one thing that's kind of aggravated me, I've lived in Michigan for about six years and I've always been a little bit frustrated with the property tax laws here. And they seem like the way the property tax laws are set up in the state, that they're more advantageous to people, just the way they're structured, more advantageous to people who have owned a home for longer amounts of time. You know, the whole process of buying a property, your taxes reset. And, you know, in a lot of cases, depending on what municipality you live in and where your millage rate's at, this is going to be a considerable part of your mortgage payment or your rent each month, however you look at it. So, you know, I guess I would like to see, and I know it sounds like it's a pretty heavy lift statewide, but I would like to see some sort of momentum to make some changes, to make it easier for younger people to get into a house. I mean, you hate to keep someone out from being able to buy a house when they can afford to save up for the down payment, but they can't afford to pick up the taxes. And usually those taxes are higher, the millage rates are higher in those city centers where the jobs are. So now these people are forced to go find a place outside of town and commute back and forth.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And I'm not an expert on tax law, but the pop up tax, I think, is what you're referring to.
Yeah, it's like the uncapping, I can't remember. I did some research on it a while back, but the proposal A, stuff that I guess happened back in the eighties, nineties, okay, yeah, so.
Well, and we are working on one bill that's called a principal residence exemption, a PRE bill, so that landlords who are renting their homes out year round to workforce would be eligible for a tax break and not have to pay the non homestead rate. So that is something, you know, we're looking at to be able to incentivize, incentivize more year round rentals, which is a huge need in our region.
Sure.
So that one is not in this bill package, but we're hoping it will be in the next one.
Okay.
Good point, though. It does need to be addressed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This would be Resolution 2021-16. Is there support for the resolution or a motion?
I make the motion to support the housing resolution 21, 2021-16.
Okay, is there support? Okay. That is a motion by Bartlett and support by M. Cortade. And any further discussion? And we'll do a roll call vote, Anne.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cortade?
Yes.
S. Cortade?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, Yarrow. It's appreciated. Have fun visiting the 119 or 20 other communities. Ooh, that's a schedule, I tell you. Okay, with that, Claire, next on our agenda is zoning amendment 2-21, which is a conditional rezoning located on Townline Road. If you could introduce this topic and go over your staff report.
Okay, so this is, this is a 228 acre site, commonly known as Elbrook Golf Course. It includes a little bit more property beyond the, the existing golf course that's being operated. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this proposed rezoning, which includes taking it from low density residential to a mix of high density residential in the front right along Hammond Road and majority of the site moderate density residential. So the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. They held two of them. The one on July 6, 2021 was when they had their deliberation. They voted on it, approved it, recommended it to the board. So that since this is about rezoning, this would need to be approved by the township board. The, the site is located within the urban growth boundary. It would be served by municipal water and sewer. That line is getting extended right now as a part of the Bayview development, which is kind of on the, right up that corner of Townline and Hammond Road. But the conditions offered by the developer, the number of dwelling units within this 228 acre site would not increase beyond what could be developed right now under a full build out. And by full build out, I mean three dwelling units per acre plus one accessory dwelling. So it's unlikely that that full build out would occur, but, but the way that it's zoned right now, it allows up to four units per acre. And so that's kind of the maximum upper limit that they're looking at for this rezoning. The, the proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the adjacent use of, the adjacent zoning surrounding the property. And it's also generally consistent with the future land use designations of the, of the surrounding property. You've got Bayview, which is high density residential. You've got to the north, industrial. And then you have moderate density residential zoning. And then you have identification of high to medium density in those subdivisions. I will highlight the fact that neighboring residents have expressed some concerns about the consistency with existing land use. So the way that the subdivisions for Dale Cherry Ridge have been developed, it's not at the, the density that they're currently zoned at. So there, those subdivisions are closer to, you know, a third of an acre to an acre lots, as opposed to they're zoned right now up to five dwelling units per acre. So this rezoning is consistent with future land use and zoning and less consistent with the existing land use. Similarly, Garfield Township to the west is primarily agriculture and the subdivisions to the south and east are lower density. So that was one thing that we really talked a lot with the Planning Commission, was the importance of the transition of uses and the transition of intensity. So the applicant worked with, met with representatives from all three of those subdivisions with Verndale Cherry Ridge and it's a farm lane just to the south. And so I think, I think the applicants will discuss in a little bit more detail, but they've got kind of a proposal that's included in the packet where there's a transition where the, the development, the housing, there's a buffer and then the types of housing that they're looking at that's to the east and south of the property that would be closest to those neighborhoods would be much lower intensity units compared to, compared to what would be kind of up, up front along Hammond Road. And I will, I will mention, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this, but this is, this is a rezoning. So sometimes in the past, a rezoning has come before you with a site plan associated to it. But in this instance, there's no site plan. And so this would be a rezoning with the conditions offered by the applicant. And they would come back in the future to the Planning Commission for the site plan approval. And that would get into all the details of kind of the circulation, the drives, the layout of the buildings and those types of things. I just wanted to highlight with the proposal, the, the variety of housing types which would be permitted. And so the applicant is really looking to have different housing types than what's permitted in low density residential. So I think this rezoning request is, is less about increasing density, but more about expanding the types of housing that's permitted. Low density residential is fairly restricted in terms of the types of housing formats that are, that are permitted. It's generally just single family detached homes. I spoke with the Grand Traverse County Road Commission engineer, Wayne Schoonover, about edge cone, just to get a little bit better understanding about what edge cone is. He just, he confirmed that the road is seasonal, very low priority for maintenance and grading from the, from the road commission. And they see that in the foreseeable future to remain that way. There's one condition from the applicant that, that references access connections and one of the conditions that, that they wouldn't seek access connections to the, to the southern portions connecting to the east subdivision, both Cherry Ridge and Verndale. So our, the way the East Bay Township ordinance is written, we do require an access connection. So I see that something that could be accommodated within that first 533 feet from Hammond Road. So that, that's where we'd be looking for those access connections as a part of the site plan review. I think that there's an opportunity with site plan review to have access connections for non motorized, especially with the safe routes to school, getting, getting residents to Cherry Knoll and Stees and East Middle School. But not necessarily the vehicular connections in the southern portion of the property. There's conditions often offered by the applicant in the packet. And as I touched on it, many of them are proposed buffers and transition of intensity of uses that were arrived at through conversations and input from representatives from the surrounding subdivisions. You'll see in page 118 of your packet, there's more information on their proposed phasing and the timeline for when this, how long this conditional rezoning would be, would be effective is really something that the township determines. So this is something that the, that the board would approve. This is a record, that the timeline was recommended by our Planning Commission. Our attorney reviewed it and was supportive, thought that that was a reasonable timeline, what they're, what they're presenting, that this would ultimately be a township board decision. So you guys can negotiate any of the conditions. You just say yes or no. But in terms of the timing of the conditional rezoning, that's something that the board can make a determination on. And I think there's some proposed findings of fact that are included in your packet. Those were reviewed and adopted by the Planning Commission. But those are, again, you guys can review and make any changes to those as you, as you see that there are staff recommendations and supported by the Planning Commission.
Terrific. Thank you. Do you, would you like to introduce the applicant if they would like to make any comments?
Yes, yes, I think we have.
Good evening. I'm Joe Lucicchio of Bayview TC LLC. I live at 316 Birchwood Avenue here in Trapper City. And Doug McUnfield is with me tonight as well, and you all know Doug. This conditional rezoning before you recommended for approval by your Planning Commission was initially requested by the Nelson and Olson families as owners and stewards of Elbrook Golf Course since inception some 50 years ago. And as the intended purchaser of Elbrook, we are jointly seeking this approval. Wes Nelson, the owner and whose father started this whole development is here with us tonight. Prior to the July 6 Planning Commission meeting, we had the opportunity on two separate occasions to meet with local residents, including many from the Verndale Cherry Ridge and Windmill Farm subdivision, which boarded the site on the east and south sides. First meeting took place right here in Township Hall and where approximately 30 to 35 residents attended. The second was with representatives and legal counsel for the concerned citizens of East Bay Township, a nonprofit group consisting of approximately 40 residents from Verndale Cherry Ridge and Windmill, whose purpose was to meet with our group as petitioners for this rezoning and to have their concerns heard and addressed to the greatest degree possible. The concerns of those residents were clearly articulated and through good faith negotiations, we created either new conditions or enhanced conditions to the conditional rezoning. Further, as a result of the feedback gain from other local residents at an earlier Planning Commission meeting, we created more development conditions and/or restrictions on the south side of the site, parallel the farm lane and on the west side of the site, which would be Garfield Township. And all of these conditions in total were in addition to or an enhancement of the conditions already offered at the time of application back in April. Township officials, including all the Planning Commissioners, received an email from the concerned citizens of East Bay Township, which stated that in light of the good faith negotiations and resulting conditions provided, they do not oppose this conditional rezoning. Doug and I can address any of the questions you have about the specific conditions. The golf business has been and continues to be an incredibly challenging industry. And competition for the golf dollar is intense and that certainly holds true in Grand Traverse and surrounding counties with large numbers of courses to play in an industry where, in sport where participation is continually declining. Since 2003, there's been a consistent annual decline in the number of golfers. And in 2019, there were approximately 7.5 million fewer golfers when compared to 2003, a loss of approximately 25% of all the golfers in the country. For these and other reasons, the owners of Elbrook have been looking to sell the course since 2004. And, you know, since that time, it is not sold as a golf course because it's just a very, very difficult industry and you have a lot of big, big players. And so it's, it's a tough, it's a tough business. But the Elbrook site is currently zoned LDR and would permit only single family residential. But to develop that, the Elbrook site in that regard would not only be a missed opportunity to help meet the housing needs and visions of your township, but would also ignore several housing needs and demographic sectors of the housing market. And let me be clear and reiterate what Claire said. This is not an effort to achieve higher zoning than what, or density, excuse me, than what could be built there today under the LDR. We are looking for a variety of housing types. And with a, with a site as large as this, I think it merits that type of approach to housing. And part of the stated vision of, of the township as identified in the 2015 Master Land Use Plan encourages more intense and diverse land uses in the northern portions of the township. And the Elbrook site is not only within that portion, but as Claire said, it's also within the identified urban growth boundary and the sewer and water district. And the Master Land Use Plan goes on to, it has a section devoted to the township's main policies of the plan. And one of them states, "The long-term health and vitality of the community hinges on our ability to attract and retain investment in quality residential neighborhoods and desired commercial land use." The Elbrook site is a wonderful opportunity to provide various types of market rate housing that address several different demographic profiles and can serve to meet a number of the township's housing goals and needs. This site will ultimately be a blend of market rate rental and for sale housing. I want to be clear about that. We're going to have single family housing here as well. And it will, you know, the formats will include single family, multifamily and attached products. Empty nesters, families young and old, and those within the regional workforce will find ample housing opportunities within the future development. And this conditional rezoning will create the means by which this diverse housing opportunity can be realized. Your Planning Commission and your planning staff have acknowledged the merits of this conditional rezoning. And we hope that you as the township board will as well. And Doug and I are happy to address any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mindy, as the Planning Commission appointee from the board, did you have anything to add? Mindy, as the Planning Commission appointee from the board, did you have anything to add?
I just want to say that we had a packed house for the first public comment. A lot of people were upset. They did not want the golf course to go away. They built their houses assuming that the golf course was going to stay. And we did have the owners of the golf course, and I believe we still have one for you tonight, and they all talked about how it's time for their family to move on to, to different, different opportunities in life, if you will. So we did see that, but we also, at the second meeting, we did have the letter from this attorney for the Concerned Citizens Group that said, hey, we've come to these agreement and we don't have any objections. Well, we still had a pretty good crowd that did have objections, and the objections, a lot of it were, these conditions aren't, aren't real cut and dry until you start really looking at them. They're not, they're not saying, saying, a lot of people wanted that site plan. They wanted to see exactly what house was going to go where, and where a duplex might be, or where a townhouse might be. And so there was a lot of, I want to know what's going to be on this right behind my house. And since that's not what we were looking at, and we were really looking at just a conditional rezoning with a site plan coming back, a lot of the comments in the second Planning Commission public hearing were, were something we couldn't answer because we didn't have a site plan. I think that 90% of the people that had questions were on the very specific information of that site plan, and not objecting to the actual change in the zoning. I think that the, the developer worked with most residents a great deal to come to a, a place of harmony. There are still some objections and some people that didn't feel they were necessarily represented, because not everybody was in that citizens group. Again, it was 40 people, that's not all of the group. Some didn't even know about it, and when you say, you know, it was representatives of Verndale and Cherry Ridge and Windmill Farms, that may be true, but that wasn't everybody. And so I just want to make that clear, that not everybody was in agreement, but most people that had objections weren't objecting to the conditional rezoning, they were objecting to what might be in their backyard. So, and when, when, at the end, when we talked about it to the public hearing, it was stated that, hey, this is not a site plan, you know, there is still time to talk to the developer, and, and it doesn't mean that they're going to put the highest intensity use right behind your house just because they can. You know, that's not what, that's not going to make them the most money either. So I think that we have a pretty good product here. I, I believe it's good for the community, and I believe most people were happy with the outcome that, that we have here.
Okay, thank you very much. Claire, if you would, I'll just have you come and sit at the table if the board has any questions, so you don't have to go back and forth. So with that, I'll just remind the board what you mentioned when you were addressing us, which is, this is a conditional rezoning, and it's not an exchange of give and take. It is either an acceptance or a denial of the conditions presented by the developer, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the timing.
Right, correct, thank you. And again, that timing right now is slated that it would begin, is it November?
Oh, 2022.
2022. Okay. Could you talk just a little bit about the basis behind the timing?
I would be happy to kind of provide the, my staff understanding of it, but the, the timing was, was kind of driven by the developer timeline. There was a desire to keep the golf course open as long as possible, because there's a lot of due diligence and financing and kind of site preparation work that would need to go into coming before the township and coming before the Planning Commission with the site plan. And so there is a desire to, how can we keep this golf course open as long as possible? If, if this was approved, then effective November 1st of 2022, the, the rezoning would go into effect, and so at that time, the golf course would become a legal non-conforming use. So the golf course can continue to operate during that time, but it would not be able to expand, there wouldn't be able to be any changes or anything like that. And so while the, while the developer was working, you know, through the different phases of this project, this will be a, you know, multi-year-long phased construction. If approved, then there would be the opportunity to keep that golf course open for, you know, a certain number of holes, and, and keep that open to the public. Once it becomes a, once it's, you know, formally rezoned, and it's the, the moderate density and, and high density, if approved by the township, then that would, the golf, public golf course is not a use permitted within those districts. So it would be, there'd be an opportunity to have, you know, like a par three or some sort of amenity for residents, but it wouldn't be something that would be open to, open to the public for use.
And Claire, remind?
I'm sorry, if I could just clarify, during the time, we, we had, we would have until, we'd start November, or this would be effective November 1, 2022, we would have three years to have substantial construction started, and, and the Township Attorney defined substantial construction, it's well more than sticking a shovel in the ground, it goes way beyond that. But during that time, there, the golf course could operate as a legal non-conforming use, correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify and make sure what I, what I heard you say, so.
Okay, very good. That's what I was going to follow up and ask you, the length of term for the conditional rezoning, before that expires, so, three years? Okay, with that, we'll open up to questions from the board. Questions or comments?
I've got, I've got a couple. The, the piece that I guess I'm, I'm struggling with understanding is the, the existing density. So you talked about, you know, low-density, three units per acre plus an accessory dwelling. What I heard, and I, I watched both the Planning Commission meetings, is that the geography of the property, and I know there's like a Mitchell Creek Tributary that runs through it, and there's a lot of, a lot of changes in elevation on the property, but I heard the, the applicant mention a number of times that trying to feasibly, you know, develop this out as single-family homes, running roads through there, I guess there had to be, you basically want to double-stack the, the houses on either side of the road to make it feasible to spend the money to put infrastructure in and get that. I guess, so I'm, I'm looking at this, and I see the calculation of four units per acre times, where we're having 200 and something, 229 acres. So that's where we get to the number, but in reality, if it were to stay zoned low-density, and it were to be built out that way, there would never feasibly be that many units on that property. So it's all, you know, it's all hearsay as to how many would be there and what, what you could actually build out on the property, but.
Under, under a PUD or cluster-type housing within your ordinance, is we could achieve that kind of density? You know, I mean, would, do we know we could get to 912? No, we, we certainly don't at this point. But, you know, under a PUD, if we came before you with that, we, we could get probably dogged close, you know, or, or cluster zoning, or whatever, you know. So it's, and again, this is, this is about being able to provide a variety of housing types.
Sure, sure, I understood. I just, I guess I was looking at the 912 as a calculation based on a perfectly flat square piece of property, how you could get there.
Yeah, I mean, your ADU, accessory dwelling unit allows you to match the size of the primary residence, so could we design a single-family site that provided for enough room for the ADU on that site, and, and, you know, whether it was the same size or something a little bit smaller, and, you know, get, get whatever density number, sure. Are we doing ourselves a service in that regard? I don't think so. And I just think it'd be, it's, again, this is not a, not a density grab, it's about variety.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is, what I don't want to see is, I mean, this is, this is a huge undertaking, this is a major, for East Bay Township, this is a huge development. I mean, if we're just, we just had the discussion about how many people per unit, for, for people potentially, I mean, that's what the, the lady that just talked about the housing initiative was, four people per unit, you know, you're talking about a, a lot of people increase, potentially, when this thing gets built out, you know, a 30% increase to the, to the population of East Bay Township. I, I can't go back through the numbers and see how much, you know, medium density or high density has been developed over the years, but I have to imagine, this is well worth 10 or 15 years' worth of development in East Bay Township, maybe more, as far as medium and high density. What, I guess where I'm going with the, the, the number here is, you know, I'm concerned that we set a precedent, you say, okay, we approve this, and the next guy shows up and says, hey, I've got 100 acres over here, housing crisis, we need more housing, we need varieties of housing, I've got 100 acres, but 20 of it is a wetlands, and I need some adjustments, I need to rezone it so I can get the same density on my property. You know, are we setting a precedent by making accommodations for existing conditions on properties in the name of?
We already do that, we already do that, that's all the way around the township. You, you have a piece of property, you figure out what the density is, and then you figure out how many housing units. There's the, the, very specifically, the apartment complex on South Airport Road has this bridge to this piece of property they can't develop. They have to keep that piece of property because of the density that is on the rest of the property, because it's the whole piece of property that gives you your density. It's not just what you can use.
Yeah, but I guess in this case, it's currently, it's currently zoned as low-density. So we're, he's asking, the applicant's asking for, you know, to have it rezoned to high-density to accommodate the ability to build it out, at least what I gathered from the conversations that the applicant has had with the Planning Commission in previous meetings, to accommodate what the existing conditions are. And, you know, the backside of the property, the south side of the property is a big, you know, side of a hill, not to mention all the changes in geography and a, and a creek that goes through the middle of it, and I think there's some specific setbacks to that creek as well. So that, that's, that's one of my concerns, and.
Can I clarify? Sorry to interrupt you, but the, the high-density portion is 35 acres up front, roughly. 33 acres up front.
Yep.
Next to Bayview, where there's some high-density already. The whole south portion, 190 acres, would be MDR. So that's, you know, and that, that density is five, and so we're not talking about a big step up from the LDR.
Right.
It's a variety of housing types.
Understood.
And so you still will have those limitations driven by that south side, that topography and everything else that we're dealing with, no matter how it's built.
Right.
So, you know, when you really get down to it, can we achieve that with 190-some acres of this being at five acres, five units to the acre? You know, you understand the, the difficulty in the rear end there.
Yeah, yeah.
You just stated.
My, my point with everything I just said is just setting this precedent that, you know, has other developers coming here trying to rezone properties to higher density on the basis of the fact that there are existing conditions that are limiting their ability to build out housing, that's all. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just, just, we, we have done conditional rezonings before. We have currently one development that's in the midst of being developed that's under a conditional rezoning, and that is Alta Vista, which is located on Hammond Road. Is there, are there other questions, comments?
Yeah, first off, I really appreciate the fact that it appears that you've taken the time to listen to everybody's concerns and then worked your plan through that. And from what I see here, I, I don't have a problem, I, I, it fits with what's there, it fit, and, you know, you created a buffer to kind of make a transition. My biggest thing, and I know we're not supposed to negotiate, but my biggest thing is the access roads to other subdivisions. Back in the 80s and 90s, when I used to come to the Planning Commission almost every month, that was a lot of talk then about what was happening, and that we needed to create those interconnections. At that time, a lot of it was talked about for, you know, for fire and ambulance services to have access. And we didn't want to see a bunch of individual 40-acre subdivisions with no interconnections between them. So I really feel strongly it's important to have it. I know I won't make any friends with the neighbors over there, but, you know, and the same with the roads. You know, Town Line Road is a two-mile road, in case people don't understand that. Garfield's one mile, Town Line's two mile, three mile, four mile. And those were all, should have been gridded out years ago when they did that for the whole state, but it was never developed. So personally, I'd like to see Town Line Road extended at least, and if it had a chance to hook up to Emerson Road, would be great, because those interconnections, the lack of, the interconnections that we have within this township, or this whole county as far as that goes, is why we have a Hammond Road out here with 8,000 cars a day trailing up and down. It's huge. And if we had the possibility that if someone from one spot to the other could just drive down the normal roads like they do in town to get from one place to the other. So I really would like to see that at least partially be, if not completely. Those, those outlots were not built in those subdivisions just for someone to park a boat on it as they build houses next to it. So they really should be reconnected up.
So.
I'm sorry, can I speak to just one?
Sure.
Okay. Speaking about Town Line, you, you may recall that we have an obligation as a developer to improve that from, from Hammond to the golf course service drive. And then beyond that, you know, that's really just a private drive down to a few residences there. But that will be improved sometime in 2022 or '23, so roughly, you know, based on some construction scheduling, and things kind of got, you know, slapped around a little bit with all the COVID stuff, so just, that's, that's our plan with the Road Commission, and we have that obligation to, to take care of that.
Thank you, Joe. Claire, could you talk about the, the condition that is listed last on page three? Because I, I do understand Matt's point, I know we've experienced this in other areas of the township, where we have had developments that have not wanted to be connected, and when they are developed and they are connected, what you find is really a dispersment of traffic and the less, less issues on, you know, one road in particular. So could you talk a little bit about the, the condition and the phrasing about the, unless otherwise required by governmental agencies?
Yeah, the way that I read this condition is there's nothing hamstringing the township from, as a part of the site plan review, requiring some interconnections even beyond that first 533 feet. So the, the applicant, one of their conditions, they are not going to seek vehicular connection south of that first 533 feet. So their, their site plan that they're going to be putting together is, you know, potentially access, whether that's to, there's a little stub road that auto owners are connecting into the last stub road up at the northern portion of Verndale. But that is not to say that the township cannot, as a part of the site plan review process, seek some additional, that most likely it wouldn't, there wouldn't be connections as a part of this development, but there could be those reciprocal easement agreements put in place and connections to Edgecombe to have the, to, to connect in the future to, to both Verndale and Cherry Ridge. So right now, Verndale and Cherry Ridge, those stub roads do not go all the way to Edgecombe, and so this developer, we don't, we don't necessarily have anything in place that would require that connection, but we can, we can require those, those easements to be put in place for, for future connections.
So just to clarify one thing, and then we'll go to you. So if this were, if this conditional rezoning were approved with the proposed conditions as is, that wouldn't necess, necessarily negate connections to be made through the Planning Commission, through that site plan review process?
That's correct, that, that's.
Okay, okay. Mindy?
When this was up for rezoning.
When this was up for rezoning, four years ago, five years ago, there was a house full here. A lot of them were from Cherry Ridge. And I believe they produced documents that said that they existed prior to the zoning requiring the connections, so they do not want to connect, because those are all private roads, and they don't want to have the traffic input impact on the roads for which they pay for. So although that, I do not believe that's the case for Verndale or Farm Lane, that is the case, I believe, for Cherry Ridge.
Yep.
It's probably why there's a gate between Cherry Ridge and Verndale.
There is. It is on Verndale's side, which is not technically allowed. However, if we were to have Verndale take that down, in all likelihood, Cherry Ridge would turn around and put one up. So it's an exercise in futility to do that because of that reason.
I imagine to present to prevent the cross-through traffic off of Hammond to cut around up to three mile.
Sure. Absolutely. But again, as Matt mentioned, you know, we we have had this situation in other places. I've seen it in Holiday Wood, in Holiday Hills, rather, where developments were not connected. I mean, Primary Way was either out Proudie or up Holiday Road for certain subdivisions. They were all interconnected with the development of at least two towns, at least two subdivisions, if not, yeah, two subdivisions, made that all interconnected. And there's probably at least three ways to get out of there right now. So what that does is it dissipates traffic, it makes emergency services have multiple methods of getting into the into the area. It's easier on the roads, because you're not just using one one road. So there's a there's a whole bunch of benefits, a whole lot of reasons why that's considered preferential planning and is in our zoning now for that. Would you, does that sound accurate to you? Okay, thank you, Claire. But again, and I think that you Glenn will remind us that that he lived through that, where you made that discovery that about Cherry Ridge and and some of the other subdivisions there.
Yeah, the one thing I want to mention on that, as long as you're talking about gates, is Farm Lane, there's a gate on Cherry Ridge where tied in the Farm Lane. And what I see with that is if there's emergency call and the ambulance goes into Cherry Ridge, technically, they got to go all the way around back Garfield and back in that way. And it's always concerned me about that. If there's a medical emergency, the time it's going to take. So, you know, it's a little late now, but I would hope in the future that we eliminate that kind of stuff, just for the emergency medical. Yeah, they put gates there, and I guess fire trucks can crash the gates. I I don't know, but
We have key. We don't crash gates.
But anyhow.
There aren't breakaway gates.
Any other comments or questions?
All I'll say is I have watched the planning commission meetings. I did listen to what the residents said. I, when you go, Mr. Nelson, I loved your speech. I loved when my girls golfed on your course. I thought that your points were very well taken. Things do change. We do need to be mindful of our neighbors, which I think you have done with your discussions. But as Mr. Nelson said, he did not complain when those homes were going in, those developments were going in. He was a good neighbor. And I think you're making that valiant effort with what you'd like to do. I think it's it's not always a win-win-win, but you've definitely come to the table with a deck of cards on how you can make it happen. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
One minor one, just because I, it's me. Water and sewer maps, they're reversed. It says sewer over the water map and water over the sewer.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, just look at that.
I've got I got one last one.
Sure.
On the timing, I know we had talked before about the November 1st, 2022. Understand that it's tied to, you know, timing of development and due diligence and all this. Is that typically done in these these conditional rezonings?
So I haven't seen it redone in the conditional rezonings that we've done prior. However, I know Peter said that it's completely legitimate, particularly with all of the upfront work that the developer has to do, and also the desire to keep the recreational golf course operating. And what we're doing basically is not, I mean, there's so many things that we'll defer to, like another construction year often in this state because of weather and so forth. So it's it's not, it's not as though we're putting it to 2024, I guess is what I'm trying to say. It's
Well, I guess my concern with it is this, you know, if a rezoning were to be effective today, I don't know how long it would take for public records to update, but I would imagine in a couple of months or so, things would catch up. And, you know, I just don't think that it's it's probably fair to potential property, property owners or people that are, you know, maybe looking to buy a house or buy a property that's adjacent to it or close by, to see a property that is currently, within the next year and a half, you know, almost a year and a half, reflected as, you know, hey, it's a golf course, it's low density, no issue here. Someone like myself, which may not be everybody, but I would go and do my own due diligence and do my own research and look. And maybe they buy a property or a house with the understanding that it's currently zoned low density without knowing that there's a there's a ticking time bomb going off that it's going to be rezoned in November of 2022.
Yeah. So with the public hearing, all of the homes, all the homeowners within 300 feet, correct, have to be noticed and would be aware of this project. And so through their sales transaction, they would be required to disclose that to potential buyers. So and legally, from perspective, 300 feet is what the state requires is to be noticed.
It must be disclosed.
Okay.
And are we aware of, but just kind of following that train of thought, are we aware of any large tracts or anything, or, you know, even that are for sale around there? I mean, obviously, a home could go up for sale at any time, but I don't think there's any five, 10-acre parcels.
Not in East Bay Township. I don't know.
There's nine acres that just went up behind Roy's.
But yeah, on the flip side, yeah. Mindy?
I do want to say that when we did the Town Line, the Garfield, the PUD back there, that was approved for seven years, and then it got to one-year extensions. So in in actuality, that was approved for a total of nine years.
And that was for financing?
Yep.
I'm not 100% sure, but you bring up a point about somebody looking at a property. Anybody that's got a notice that they decide to sell their property, I think, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that by law, they have to disclose that.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's what they're saying. But I guess, I don't know, it just seems like a bit of disservice even to those people outside of 300 feet. What if you were at 301 foot and you had no idea? You buy a house and, you know, three months later, here's the dozers.
Actually, that's a, it's an interesting point, because I remember years ago being on the planning commission, and I said, well, it's great that we notify at 300 feet, because that's, you know, what the state requires. Why why don't we do, you know, 500 feet or something like that? Because people are impacted that are beyond 300 feet. Problem with that becomes, what legal counsel advised me of, is when you start to notice at 500 feet, okay, then what happens if actually someone who's 501 feet? You just have no basis. It's arbitrary. So
Yeah, I I get all that. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we notice more people.
No, I know.
I'm suggesting that we make the rezoning effective immediately so that those public records are updated, and there's no question in people's minds, they have the opportunity to obtain that information on their own. Not to say that everybody would, but it's there, and it's not creating a situation where someone is getting into maybe their dream home, their place up north. They found a great place and turn around, and this is not what they expected, not what they thought they they kind of bought into. So
Sure.
And I get it. That can happen anywhere. I just don't, I don't know that it's right for us to create that potential situation for somebody.
Could I just, one quick comment?
Sure.
With the, so this timeline comes from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and so there's no guidance on what the township should determine for for a timeline. So, you know, I mean, another option that the board could consider is having this zoning effective immediately with four years as opposed to three years. That would be the same timeline for for the applicant and would kind of get at Matt's concern about.
But in that time, wouldn't it affect the ability for the golf course to proceed?
The, if it went into effect tonight, the rezoning, then the golf course would, as of, you know, not tonight, but once it got noticed in the paper and became effective, it would be a legal non-conforming use. So it could continue to operate, it just couldn't expand and change. So that would be something for the board and the applicant to
And I don't, I don't think, I don't know, but I don't think they had any plans for expansion.
I don't believe so.
We did not.
So why did you start with the November 2022 date?
Just because we we definitely are operating the golf course next year and and 2023 season as well, more than likely, and quite possibly beyond. And and that was only, that was really realized through discussions with township attorney, talking about how this could be handled. So we know that the 2022 season, we are going to be operating. So that was just because of the the size of the property and what we're doing next door, it was, okay, this will give us time to truly site plan this out without, you know, like a two-year gun to our head. Now, if it was to be effective today with the four years, like Claire suggested, we're okay with that. I mean, it's just a matter of what that, you know, what that sunset is. And then, you know, we have to come back before you, if it got to that sunset, and we're still just operating as a golf course, we'd have to come back before you, before you for an extension.
So what, Claire, what documents would be updated with this, whether it's effective from the paper soon or in a year from now? I mean, obviously, it gets noticed in the paper, is that correct, after the rezoning?
Yeah, the main document, you know, the parcel information would be updated to the to the accurate zoning, as well as our zoning map would be updated to reflect the zoning designation. So there was a legal description provided in the packet to show that that line differentiation between the high density and moderate density. So those would all be updated.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of that timeline, so when we notice that the board made a decision on this, and it gets put in the paper, does it state that it becomes a high density, moderate density as of this date, but it's noticed now? And so any documents that are pulled?
I think that's what we would do, and I would need to double-check with our with our attorney if that was what the board
Thank you.
Okay. Joe, please feel free to take a seat there, if you don't mind, because I'm just going to ask, this is, this is not a public hearing. However, this is a topic that's created a lot of interest, so I will open it up to public comment if there is any public who would like to make a comment. Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring that back to the board and ask if there's any further questions, discussion, or a motion. Could you clarify, Claire, exactly what a motion, proposed motion would include?
So you'll see in your packet, there is a recommended
Page 82.
Motion on page 82. So that would be taking a look at the staff memo and findings of fact dated June 29th, the conditions set forth by the applicant, and the timing outlined in the communications from the applicant dated July 2nd, which is the the page that we are reviewing, as well as the boundary line showing the delineation between the two requested conditional rezoning zones on the site survey. So that's the sample motion. If you wanted to change the timeline, then that could be noted in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion just as stated in her packet, to zoning amendment, to approve the zoning amendment 2-21, 1750 Town Line Road, conditional rezoning, approval is subject to staff memo and findings of fact dated June 29th, 2021, and conditions set forth by applicant, the timing outlined in the communications from the applicant dated July 2nd, 2021, and boundary line showing the delineation between the two requested conditional rezoning zones that is shown on the site survey.
Port.
Okay, motion is made by Ms. Cortez and supported by Lyle. Is there further discussion?
So you're leaving it at the November 1st, 2022?
I see no problem with it, yes.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote?
Sure. Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Esquarted?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes. Okay.
So I will comment on Taff and all your
Absolutely. Thank you for working with the residents of of East Bay. Appreciate that. Okay, we will move on to the emergency service budgets. We have Nick Lemkow here and Pat Parker and Assistant Chief Captain Tony, or Assistant Chief Pose, Captain Poe.
How much time do you have on the hard side?
Tony Posey's here.
Tony's here.
Are there any other titles I can throw in there, you know?
All those.
Okay.
Bottle washing.
Right, right. So you will see in your packet, one of the things that was included was just an overall historical millage for ambulance, fire, and police that goes all the way back to 2010, and has the projected millage and the actual revenue that projected revenue that for that year as well as the actual, and then the proposed millage rates for this year. So first up, we have East Bay Ambulance and a continuation of the emergency medical service expanded service request along with their budget for fiscal year 2022. I'm just going to go over real quick the documents we have. Of course, you have the same documents that you had from the special meeting on Tuesday, August 3. And then you have the considerations from East Bay Ambulance and the first budget that you have on page 13 and 14 of your subsequent packet, is that budget for East Bay Ambulance operating as we currently know it, with the capital plan related to that following it. And then, starting on page 16, you still have that budget in the second to the right column, but then on the far right column, you have the East Bay Acme budget with the full personnel. We did not provide four different options at this point. That's a lot of budgets and a lot of numbers, so we went with the one that we've, if the board chooses another option from this, we can offer an amendment to that, those budget numbers. And then, following that, on page 18, is the capital plan for that. So with that, I'll let Nick take over and talk about fiscal year 2022.
There we go. So just some general considerations for this next year. As you know, the real taxable value for the township for for the G County equalization report is at 600, or 6,250, or 6 million, 6, 25,863,374,000.
What a number.
That's a big number. What we're asking for is a, an increase to .94 mils. And this is going to help us just because of our capital. What we found in the last three years that we've been operating at that .94, we found that we don't have any wiggle room, and we don't have any, if something comes up, we'll, we come to you guys to ask for money from the township public funds instead of using our funds to do that. And we have some projects that we kind of need to work on. Like, we have an ambulance that needs a little bit of paint job. We don't have that in our budget right now, because our budgets are so tight that we just can't do anything with it. Then we have some, like, office furniture that needs to be replaced. We can't do anything with that right now either. So this is kind of helping work towards that and to help build us a little bit of wiggle room in our budget. So if we, something does come up, we're able to to take care of that. Run revenue is going to still continue to be monitored. COVID-19 kind of affected our our revenues like we talked about last week. A lot of people don't get transported anymore, and those that do get transported are really sick. And run revenue is not really something that we can have a lot of control over. 65% to 70% of what we transport are government Sixty-five to seventy percent of what we transport are, um, government insured patients. So they pretty much pay whatever they're gonna pay and nothing more.
Let me, let me stop you real quick one second. Do you have the copies?
I do, but Matt doesn't.
I think I'm, I think I'm missing that, at least this piece of it, yeah.
From your box in the hallway? Is it under here?
There was a, it was with your packet in the hallway?
Oh, okay. I picked, sorry.
Mindy's on her way.
I picked up the one this weekend and we had some more on the desk. I didn't grab what was in there.
Uh, no, it wasn't on your desk today. It was, um, on Saturday. And, yep. Let's just get him a copy of that so that he can take a look at what your. Thank you, Mindy. I stole Matt Cortez. Okay, all right, go ahead, Nick.
Um, and then the transfers, uh, we predicted our delivery for ambulance was gonna be in December-ish. Um, however, I was told a week before last that we're not even gonna have a chassis until January, so we won't have that truck till probably April, May, somewhere in there of 2022. So we transferred all of the money that was gonna be put towards that into the next year's budget as well. Um, for expenses, we're looking at a five percent across the board due to cost of living and then a market adjustment. What we're finding is, um, we're on the lower part of, of our neighbors and then there's a lot of discussions, uh, with other agencies that are doing sign-on bonuses up to like seventy-five hundred dollars to get, attract people and to get them to keep working. Um, and then we have, uh, like Calcasas starting medics, brand new medics off the street at nineteen bucks an hour. We're not quite there. So they're getting desperate and in order to do that, they're paying them a lot of money. So we're just kinda adjusting up for that. We're not looking to be above them, but we're looking to be kinda comparable with them. That way we can continue to be competitive in our, our marketplace. I did, we missed, uh, on that range there, that fifteen fifty-six to seventeen twelve for EMTs and that eighteen oh three, the top end should be twenty-one, twenty-nine for currently. And then the new range would be that sixteen thirty-four to seventeen ninety-eight for EMT and then eighteen ninety-three to twenty-two thirty-five for medic. And then my wage, I forgot to put on there as well. Right now I'm at twenty-three sixty-one and then in the twenty-twenty-two would be twenty-four seventy-nine. One thing that we see, uh, for costs going up is medical supplies. We'll see with our budget adjustment that we put in for, uh, this year, uh, prices are ridiculous for medical supplies right now. Glove boxes, uh, fluids, everything's just going up and it's not something we have control over. Um, we do work closely with our supplier and we do work with other suppliers. We get a pretty good deal on with our supplier that we use now. So it would be probably a ten percent to go someplace out to other suppliers. And then throughout this whole pandemic, we'd been able to get supplies, which have been cut down for other agencies that they just can't find stuff. Our contracted services will be the same, uh, so like the striker cop maintenance, the equipment maintenance plans, our patient surveys. I don't anticipate changing our billing company and our EPCR program. Uh, we are looking at our scheduling and timekeeping software. There's some options out there that kinda involve an online training, part two, but I'll come with that further. I don't anticipate an increase for prices for that. It's gonna be about the same. And then for capital, like I said, uh, our ambulants, we anticipated delivery in, uh, winter of 2021, however, that's been pushed back. So we put that twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars down and then the remaining one hundred and ninety-seven thousand will be put over in early 2022.
The EB one truck? Is that the one we're turning in?
No. That's the 2016 that we have.
The 2012, the two?
Yes, 2012.
Nick, last month, um, we made a, a wage adjustment to bring up one of our, um, employees. Have you had time to consider bringing up the others that are on that low scale?
That's.
To bring them more in line, not just that five percent? Because you have the ones that are on that low scale, the sixteen thirty-four, sixteen forty-three, sixteen seventy-eight. When my conversation, it wasn't by board action, but it was my conversation, that I felt that they were all underpaid and that they should have an adjustment looked at. And the, the conversation was that we would handle, could handle that in 2022.
That's kinda what this was, is, is, is to keep them, the normal, uh, market adjustment about the same.
But then everyone's getting that five percent?
Correct.
And so they're still staying that much below for doing the same service?
I think a lot of that has to do with years of service on the job as well.
Well, I'm just hearing you say that Calcasas hiring at nineteen dollars an hour.
For paramedics, a fresh paramedic off the street at nineteen.
So they have the paramedic certification, they're not a first responder, they're not an EMT, they are paramedic. Thank you for the clarification. I, I still think that, you know, seventeen dollars an hour is not unrealistic for someone that's being charged to save a life. But.
That's what our market, I mean, if we wanna go above market, that's gonna cost us more money.
I understand.
And this, this, this range keeps us, keeps us competitive. Um, we're not the top. We don't have a massive problem recruiting people. Um, I, I don't disagree that we all probably deserve to be paid more, um, but I, that's what we can do with our market. And then we have to maintain that moving forward too.
Can I ask you to just keep it on your radar?
Yep.
And bring it to us with an idea, um, sooner rather than later?
I, just for clarification, are you asking for a range for a, uh, an, across the board increase? Or are you talking about very specific, um, paramedics or EMTs or, or specific ones?
Well, I, when I brought it up last month, um, it just, it struck me as, and those are twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two numbers I gave, um, it struck me, um, that we were, we were making an adjustment on one where really those wages weren't that much different for others. There, I think there's a whole set of folks that could have been brought up a little bit more.
Okay, so across the board? So, cause that's what the five percent does is across, yeah, okay.
I, I understand and that's, I think that's a nice recognition. I was just expecting to see that those that were below sixteen dollars an hour might've gotten a little bit larger bump.
Okay, so for some specific, uh, some to go, okay. Mindy, were you, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're saying. Mindy?
So my only question is, Calcasas, do they have the same benefits as East Bay?
Uh, benefits are a little different. And we, our benefits are better.
For full-time?
However, yeah, for our full-time people. However, we're still, when you work in our benefits with some of their longer-term employees, they do make a little bit more money than we do.
And part timers don't get any benefits? Besides working in the blue bus?
He's, Mike's been very competitive with us and trying to figure out why we keep stealing his people. And, and he's increased their wages dramatically to, to try to offset some of that and that's what we're gonna be fighting moving forward.
And we, we've had, we've had, um, an employee before compare in detail Calcasas with East Bay Ambulance. It was full-time, um, obviously, and the benefits didn't make a difference even though, yeah, there was still some, as Nick said, some difference still, but.
Nick, when you talk about Calcasas, and I mean, we could talk about probably all of them. Do we know what their benefit package is and their wages are?
I have their benefit package and Mike hasn't given me their wages. I just know through discussions with other people on what they make over there.
Okay, so when you put the benefit package, we're above them, I'm assuming?
On benefit side, yes.
Yeah. And the wages might be a little bit lower, but if you combine them, we're not ahead of them?
We're still, we're still, um, just a little bit below them.
Even with our benefits?
Yes. This, the top paramedic on our range, that twenty-one, twenty-nine, he'd be making about twenty-eight dollars an hour if he worked for Calcasas right now. And our benefits make up about four dollars an hour.
There's not much view of the Bay, Calcasas.
Nope.
There's not.
I, I do think though, um, I do know the benefits are highly valued by the full-time employees. I have heard that, uh, repeatedly before, so. Nick, do you wanna go through the, starting on page sixteen? The, where we chose the East Bay Acme, um, with the all full East Bay ambulance personnel?
As far as?
Well, just show, I, I, I mean, I can just say, I, yeah, that's, that, um, just to note here that this shows the six forty-three, um, contribution by Acme Township as well as the seventy-five thousand dollar capital buy-in, um, in the revenue line item. And then goes down to reflect all of the individual line items, um, that were in the previous PowerPoint. And comes down to show, um, where we would be at with that. It, it does not change the millage that we would, um, have for East Bay Township. And that capital expenditure that you see in 2022 does reflect the ambulance that we're, um, putting, gonna be purchasing in, that will arrive, uh, rather, in January, February, that we've already purchased really. Yep.
You didn't mention the, um, run revenue. That reflects that in here as well. The three hundred and twenty.
That's right. Because it's an additional hundred thousand dollars. Right, correct.
Is that one thousand dollar intercept fee going away? Isn't that the one you discussed would be gone?
Yeah, I don't think that will.
That's, the, on the revenues or the expense?
On the expense.
Be probably.
It's the eight oh two zero zero one, down, the second one from the bottom.
Yeah, I think that's there just for the buffer, um, just in case MMR does cover our calls and if, right now if we were to call for intercept. It is gone on the.
And it's gone in the.
Well, just because we're.
Yeah, because we'd be our own, we'd really.
Yep. Acme Township has not, they have shown, as you know, twice, they have considered it and have shown interest in doing this. Um, but they also have a meeting tomorrow, tomorrow evening as well. And of course Doug, Doug White is here, you know, him is the Acme Township supervisor. So. I will commend Nick on coming through the, at least what I call the second half of COVID 2021, um, with some good numbers on our budget. And, um, 2022, we were really well-prepared for something that we didn't even know we had to be prepared for.
Definitely. Today, after I'd read through everything else, I decided to go back through all these numbers and try to make sense of them, so it's a change. But I did catch a couple of mistakes. One on this original presentation of where you come up with eighty-seven thousand dollars per employee, you have a four hundred and thirty-four dollar payroll expense. Well, it should be four thousand, four hundred, because it's seven point six five percent, not point seven six five percent. So that would be four thousand dollars more for every employee on your, on your figures.
That might be in that printout, but that number is in this budget. You can see that, um, down on the payroll expense line item, eight seventy-three.
On the page seventeen?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Well, all I know is that the number that, that rolled into these numbers, which rolled into those numbers and it continued rolling along that way as, as that number. So.
Well, let me put it this way. I don't know, on that, I can tell you that these added up, accumulated are the, equal the, um, payroll amount that's listed on the, uh, PowerPoint spreadsheet that we went over in detail. So the, the line item, you were sent, uh, what the line item accumulation was?
I think, I think better get a medic.
Couple. And on this financial page, we add up a few of these columns on the bottom where it has, for instance, East Bay and Acme and Metro Driver, which I know is not what we're talking about. It shows a commitment of East Bay at six forty-eight and Acme at six eleven. When you add it, you get one point two five nine million, but that doesn't equal the net cost above, which you've got listed as one point oh nine five. And it's a couple of different places there. So I guess my concern is, is as I work through this, is are we really truly at a point where we know exactly what we should be charging? I don't have a comfortability of that. As I say, from what was presented in June to what we were presented in, um, July and then August, and we started to track it, you know, the numbers changed and they're, they're getting down to where there isn't a whole lot of difference, but they, they have changed and so. But I, and I don't know if that's, that's the pre, you know, key issue here. I think the issue is whether we want to do it in the first place or not. I'll still go back to, I just don't think our charge is to supply medical services to the rest of the county or parts of the county. I know that you will go and I understand that, uh, Acme's got a little problem up there with what's happened, but they need to figure that out. And just hiring, hi, us as a hired gun, I don't know if we're gonna solve all the problems. The, you know, the thought I had, I'm not gonna put words in their mouth, they're, they're decision, but a few years back, we, the, the board or someone asked to have different proposals brought forward from Metro, from at that time Northlight and East Bay and was discussed and decided to stay with what we had. Maybe, maybe it's time Northlight or non, you know, Metro talks about what they could do out there and get into the services. I, I don't know if they're interested anymore or not, but at that time they did make a proposal. It would also possibly, if that happened, uh, could roll over eventually into Garfield Township and help solve some of their problems. Cause that's also some of the problems because of, um, MMR being there. So, you know, I, I guess where I'm at is, this has come down the pipe pretty doggone fast and we're under the gun because of the budgetary constraints and getting it out so we can get our budgets approved. And so I guess I would like to see it maybe, if nothing else, table till next year and then have more discussions on what's going on.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate those comments. Just, um, there were two parts of your comments. One were of respect to the financials and the other were of respect to the theory of providing the service. So just to address the financials, um, in the first place, you will note that the numbers do change over the two East Bay Township board meetings where we have discussed this. And that's primarily from the first meeting to the second meeting because they were very preliminary numbers as was stated to the board at the first meeting. Um, we put a, um, modest amount of time into them to getting, to see even if we could get, reach a number that might even be acceptable to Acme Township. And those were presented to the board in the first. And those were presented to the board in the first meeting in that perspective. With the board allowing us to move forward and investigate it further, we refined that. So you will find that those numbers adjusted, depending which number you're, it's probably about 30, 40,000, depending which number you were looking at. But we are definitely within an arrow of, of doing that when we refine those numbers. With respect to these numbers, I can't speak to the form that you have there. But as again, this budget does show that payroll expense, and the number here, where the 648 and the 611 don't add up to the net cost of just over a million, that's because you're looking in the column that has a Metro Driver. And that expense of the Metro Driver is not in there for the 240,000 that would be coming out of Acme's 611,000. This shows in that column what Acme's total expense is for a commitment to emergency medical services. So you have to look at the column heading to know that that's the one with the Metro Driver. So Excel typically doesn't, doesn't lie on those things. But, so with respect to the theory of whether the board wants to provide services or not, that's a valid discussion to have. And I would just state to you that, you know, this, for, for me, it's a neighboring township that is interested in these services, and we have provided them well. And it serves a dual purpose for us in doing that. One, we can provide more opportunity for some full-time positions within that job instead of neighboring jurisdictions offering part-time and part-time, which we've noted doesn't have benefits and doesn't well serve a lot of those EMTs and paramedics in our community well, as well. We have the redundancy of service then for our township residents, which makes me feel more confident. Quite frankly, I mean, this is, this is, you know, just one of the things that we do in, again, working across borders, working across agencies, into providing the best services that we can for, for residents. So I just wanted to address both of those items and, and as well, open it up to other board members.
I guess I would say, I, sorry. I too think it's helpful for our department, or not our department, our township, to have the mutual aid be our own. And I think that adding that extra staff will alleviate some of the staffing issues that we have filling with part-time people. So, you know, it's not going to put us, our residents necessarily, out to do that. Acme is going to pay for it. So I think, you know, for those redundancy and the expanded employee base, those are good ideas, good reasons.
There are, there are details, I'll be the first to admit, that are, will be, continue to be worked out through establishing a contract. And those are important details. And those will be, that will be brought to you, obviously, for authorization and confirmation of, of that contract, as well as Acme Township. And there will be important things in that. We will work with legal to do that, to represent the best outcomes for the township. But I wouldn't say that we're under, under a gun necessarily, so to speak, with the millage. Yes, the millage does need to be set in September, and Acme Township does need to make a choice. This is also something, I don't think, you know, we, we have been working on this. While it's been before this board for two to three months, I can't remember when the first meeting was. But I know Nick, and I have been looking at whether this is a possibility for some number of months prior to that as well, from an operational and financial standpoint.
I'll make a comment real quick.
Sure.
Quick. The, kind of the new guy, you know, relatively new to the township here. I don't have the, the history that everybody else does with, you know, kind of what's been built here with the ambulance service. Sounds like, I haven't fortunately had to use it yet, but it sounds like it's, you know, world-class service and, you know, real, real kind of, got that small-town feel and, and really kind of close to the, to the residents. You know, I think in concept and on paper, this is, is a good idea. It works. It looks like it works financially. But I, I guess I'm concerned with just the idea of taking, you know, something that is so good and potentially making some pretty dramatic changes to it. You know, we're, we're not, we're not talking about anything significant other than just changing the size of it, I understand that. But, you know, it's, it just has the potential in my mind, and I've tried thinking this through over the past couple of months, of all the potentials, you know, what if this goes wrong? What if, you know, that goes wrong? And it, and it may not, it may work out fine. But I guess I'm a little bit fearful that, you know, once the, once that, that sort of that can is open and you've, you've kind of expanded and gone that direction, it's going to be much tougher if something doesn't go right to pull it back. So that's, that's where I'm struggling with it.
Yeah, I, and I think part of that, for me, is because as, you know, someone who, the medical director reports to my position, I think of those things too. And I think that's what's going to be important to me when we were to negotiate contract terms, to have, to have the correct terms in there as an appropriate mechanism to make sure and oversee what the, what the primary goal of this is, which is the equitable distribution of the costs. And that's what we have tried to achieve in the budget that's presented here to you. You know, one of the things, and you had mentioned, being newer to the township and some of the history, the, the community feel of that ambulance is really new to probably half of the township. That only, East Bay Ambulance only served half of the township until 2018, 19? 19, 19. So, you know, that was, that was, talk about change, that was a very big change, going from a basic life support to an ALS, and doubling the territory. And really, more than doubling, I think, the number of calls.
It almost doubled.
Yeah, so that was a very big change. And we were very diligent and thoughtful about how we went about expanding that service and was successful. I would very much agree with you if we were talking about a much larger territory, a county-based system, which I don't disagree with, Glenn. But I would be, you know, if this were just such a, a more structural change, I would very much agree with you. But this is very much in line with what we see at Metro, which is these, you know, townships operating uniformly in the emergency services. They operate Acme, East Bay, and Garfield. This would be Acme and East Bay. At this point in time, whether Garfield recognizes, or maybe does or doesn't have an issue, that's, that's up to them to decide that. But clearly, East Bay has addressed that in its township, and Acme Township is asking for those services as well.
And I think too, this is a, it has a potential to be a drastic change. And obviously, we're adding either, you know, we're adding a full truck with either one person or two crew members. You know, we're adding one to one and a half calls a day, on average. We're running about three to four calls a day out of our Station 9 truck. So we're not adding a ton of calls, we're not adding a ton of call volume. But we're adding that availability that we can cover their calls, and then potentially have the backfill to cover our calls too. And that's why I'm supporting this and pushing it so hard, is because we need that. And if we can't do this, then we got to look at a different option on how to figure out how to cover those calls we're missing now. And I know we talked about that last week too. But this just gives us a way to be able to do this, help our neighbors, and then offset the costs to do that as well.
Keeping it reasonable to the resident.
To, I think, we're going to see a trend until the agency covering those calls can fix their issues. We're still going to go help them, and we're not going to make any money on it. We're not even going to cover our costs. We're going to do it at, at a loss right now. So we're, we're going to cover those calls now, whereas we can do them in the future, cover them with a contract for service, and at least cover our costs.
Sure, Glenn.
And I apologize, because I, for some reason, this, this doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Sure.
If you look at the financial.
What page are you on, Glenn?
It's the one that shows the different options.
Oh, sure.
Okay. If, under option one, East Bay and Acme with Metro Driver.
The second column.
Second column.
Yeah.
Acme would pay East Bay 611,000?
No, Acme would pay 611,000 for emergency services. 240 of that would go towards a Metro Driver. Now, what's unknown is whether that contract would be direct with them to go to Metro, or whether that would be through us. Either would be appropriate, it's either way.
Okay. Then if you go to option two, and we're going to supply everything, it costs them 644,000? So that'd be, it'd cost them 33,000 more, plus they wouldn't be paying Metro 240. Where's the 240 show up on ours?
The 240 is in that, see the difference in the cost, on the net cost? The one, over 1 million to the 1.3 million.
Okay, it'd been, for me, I'm kind of simple, I guess. But it'd be nice to add a column with what East Bay paid and a column what Acme would pay, so we can actually look at it and find those. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, except that's what the East Bay commitment and Acme commitment is.
Okay, but what you're talking about, you're talking about $33,000 difference, and Acme doesn't have to pay 240 to Metro. East Bay would be supplying all of that.
No, 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 take out the.
Okay, explain it where I can get it then, because I, I don't get it. I'm looking at what Acme commitment would be. With them, with the Acme supplying the Metro Driver, it was 611,000. With East Bay supplying all the personnel, Acme jumps up to 644, which is $33,000 difference. Where does the 240 go?
The 240 is in the cost for the 1.3 million. See the 700 and the 644? That adds up to the 1.3, okay? And then the 648 and the 611, plus two, adds up to 1.019 million, plus 240,000.
Okay, so what you're saying is that 300 and a few.
Right, right.
Okay.
That's right.
You understand what I'm saying, if I've been broke out so we can look at it.
I, this is showing, I appreciate that. This is showing Acme's total commitment cost for providing emergency medical.
Well, yeah, but when you look at this, and maybe I'm the only one that sees it, I see $33,000 difference, and I understand that we're going to supply all of the people.
And that's where, you know what? When you get something like that, and if that doesn't make sense, give me a call. And I will explain that, and I will even chase the chart.
We talked quite a bit today.
I know, I know.
But.
No, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
One question.
Yeah.
So under the, the current operation in East Bay, you said that, you know, if you get a call, anyone who doesn't have insurance as an East Bay resident doesn't get billed personally for, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If they're in East Bay Township, correct?
If they're transport, if they're in East Bay Township and they're East Bay Township resident, they do not get a bill.
Will that extend to Acme at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's baked into the 410 per call that we end up receiving? Yeah.
Can I just ask for clarification? Our basis for not charging our East Bay residents is because they already paid in their tax bill. We don't know how Acme is going to fund this if it proceeds. It might not be that it's being paid on their tax bill, but they're going to get the benefit of not being billed?
I would assume it's going to be paid through their taxes.
Well, one. We can assume, but we don't.
There's two ways to think about that. So it's a good question. One would be, I, I do happen to know that they will be paying it through their taxes. That's how Acme Township is looking at paying for it. However, even if they didn't, let's say they paid it out of their general fund, right? I mean, those are still tax dollars. What's the source of those? Still the taxpayers' funds.
Or revenue sharing, or. I just, I wanted some clarification, I guess.
Yeah.
So I'm supportive of using an East Bay ambulance in Acme with East Bay personnel manning it due to the fact that we will continue to do the runs we're already doing, but now we'll get paid for them. We'll have backup for our residents in our township with our personnel. And the cost to the East Bay residents is actually a benefit because we're getting another full-time paramedic.
Yeah, you're getting another, yes, correct.
Is there, can I ask the board, is there anyone who is favorable to the Metro? Working with Metro with a Metro Driver?
I think I could do either one.
I think about if, in my opinion, is, you brought up last week too, is what happens if Acme decides they're going to pull out and we're stuck with six more full-time people? I think the, the Metro fire option is a good fix for that, because now we can staff up four. And if something were to happen five, 10 years down the road, those four are going to be a lot easier to absorb than the six.
Although, one of the things, as Nick and I were talking about that, is we were talking about, you know, contracts and private industry come and go a little bit quicker sometimes than local government. Emergency service needs don't go away. We wish they did, I mean, in a way, we wish nobody needed help, right? But they don't, and they are funded with a tax source, which makes them very steady and reliable, which is one of the reasons we take a look at what the fund balance is, you know, how many months. You know, we don't necessarily have it at, you know, Pat knows this in spades. We don't necessarily have it at six or nine months or a year. We have it lower because we have that steady tax base. It's not like we have a fluctuating market of sales. And I feel like we have that a little bit with, with the contracts too. Although, you know, we, it is something that we would revisit always to make sure that we had that equitable distribution and that the partnership was working for both, both parties. I guess one easy way to tell if we have support is, I'll just, I'll make a motion, and if we get support, then we get support. I will make a motion that we would continue and extend, continue working on and extend a, how do I say that? A preliminary offer to Acme Township for operating emergency medical services with using a Metro Driver, facilitating one of the ambulance seats. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay. I'm thinking that's probably not going to, okay. So we'll do, all in favor?
Oh, what is it now, doing it under option one?
Option one, option one. So there is a motion and support for option one, East Bay Acme ambulance with utilizing a Metro Driver. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. No? No?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion fails. So I will make a motion that we we make a, we continue working towards providing an East Bay Acme emergency medical services and make a, offer contingent to Acme on a successful contract arrangement in providing emergency medical services for Acme and East Bay Township.
Using just East Bay?
Using East Bay ambulance.
I support that.
Okay. Okay. Motion is made and supported. Further discussion?
Just one question for clarification.
Sure.
You have, my understanding, if this were to pass, we would be adding point-five FTE to?
Yes.
Us.
No, with this one, it's a full.
It's a full.
Full of another point four.
Yep.
So, your budget here is, is the same for the requested budget for eBay, East Bay only, and the same as if it were to ask Acme. Would that change?
No. We developed that budget, we developed that budget with that in mind.
You would add the one, no matter what?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's the question. So it's going to cost the people of this township more money because we went through this exercise?
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
That we're going to raise the millage, and.
No, the millage is the same even without this in the budget. The millage requested is the same, and that is because of the capital. The capital, funding the capital plan for the township.
You still can't pay for the extra person without raising the millage to make it fit.
If we don't add the Acme, we are not getting the extra paramedic.
So then why is the budget the same?
It's how we're distributing costs. This is how we're distributing the cost. So the motion, any other, any further discussion? Okay, the motion is, oh, made by Friend, right? Made by Friend and supported by Walters. All in favor indicate by saying.
Roll call, please.
Well, I'll, I'll make that decision. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by no?
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Friend?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Um, Bartlet?
Yes.
Ms. Cortade?
No.
Uh, and Cortade?
No.
And Lyle?
No.
Okay, and so we will move on to the East Bay ambulance budget, and that is presented for you on both of those charts, actually. And so, I'm guessing at this point you don't have any further question on those, but if you do, we are here to answer those questions. As was previously mentioned, you'll see that we have collected a point eight-four. We moved to that when we went from BLS to ALS. And as we put together the budget, Nick and I looked at this, and we were not fully funding the capital as needed. Which was originally, I think, in our first one or two years, Nick, was it like sixty thousand? And then once we did the full-out capital plan, as requested, it was, looked to be about seventy-five thousand that was necessary. So, this plan in turn does that. You'll find, again, the page, the budget on page six, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back to the one that is just East Bay ambulance with just the capital plan. Pages thirteen and fourteen, and then the capital plan is on page fifteen of the packet.
Subsequent.
Yes.
Question on the capital plan.
Yes, sir.
Just, in my mind, we buy a new ambulance roughly every ten years.
Every five years.
No. The way I see it, with the, the current, how do you use your ambulances now? Does I use, rotate them monthly?
Yeah, we rotate them usually every week.
Every week? That does change. Because I, I, in my mind, I was thinking we had one primary ambulance doing most of the work, and the other one was that there was more as backup occasionally to be used.
We used to do that, however, we found we, when they sit longer, they develop more issues. So that's why we started rotating them. So now we replace an ambulance every five years, so every ten years, there's a new ambulance.
You get more out of your investment that way.
How many miles are in the current ambulances, roughly?
East Bay two's got about eighty-five thousand, yeah, wherever chassis is in rough shape. And then, East Bay one's got about sixty thousand right now.
Is that because East Bay two was sitting well, East Bay one was doing most of the running?
Good.
Nick?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I not, I'm probably not remembering correctly, but at one point in time, I think the board was told that once an ambulance hits a hundred thousand or ten years, it has to be replaced? Am I mixing up other ideas?
No, that.
Don't think that's a rule. I think that's a general practice. I know there's ambulances out there that have three hundred, four hundred thousand miles on them, however, they're in rough shape.
And that's probably why we can sell them to those other.
Yeah.
Industries.
Depends what kind of engine they have on them too.
Remember that statement too?
I'm going to tell you what state, that's what I was told. I called the state of Michigan. State of Michigan said absolutely not. You don't have to get rid of them unless they've been in an accident. If they've been in an accident, you got to get them certified. Other than that, you can run twenty-year-old ambulance.
And it really depends on the engine that they have.
Sure. I just, when I remembered hearing that, I'm like, well, I know that's why we probably switch them out every ten years, but.
And that's, you know, like, that two thousand twelve ambulance that we have, the East Bay two, it's got eighty thousand miles on it, but it, for some reason, that chassis, that year, it's just, we're putting money into it all the time.
I've seen some of the maintenance bills over the years.
Lots of engine repairs, lots of stuff like that.
I don't know what the cost is, but I've read up where they're taking ambulances and taking the box off, buying a new chassis, and putting the box on it.
Yep.
I don't know what the cost is. Maybe it's cost prohibitive, but.
It saves you a little bit, but.
Yeah.
I've just seen people buying them and turning them into RVs.
The problem with the re-chassis is, sometimes you just don't have the same quality. You end up with issues over time. The, that program's gotten a little better over time, but it's still not a hundred percent.
Okay, I don't know. I just, I know I read up on it.
Kind of like putting lipstick on people.
Yep, fresh paint, new chassis, and they call it good most of the time.
Are there many line items that anybody needed any further explanation on? Or is there a motion to approve the, the two thousand twenty requested budget?
Well, when we would have to take it to a public hearing next month for a formal.
Well, that's what I mean to, yeah. A motion to approve it for a public hearing.
Um, I guess.
Thank you for the clarification.
I just want to make sure that this ALS intercept fee as an expense needs to stay there or not. It's at the bottom of page sixteen, the.
Uh, yeah, we do.
Two oh-oh-one.
We do have that in with just the, with just the East Bay ambulance, yes.
Bottom of page what?
It's on page sixteen of twenty-one thousand. And if it's got to be there, it's got to be there. I just.
Yeah, I would, I would think we would just keep that there.
And so that would be like if.
We've already spent seventeen hundred dollars out of there so far this year, so it's.
Is it enough?
We may have to increase that as we go forward. But it, it all depends on how much, how many times MMR comes in and transports one of our residents.
Or if Blair or Paradise or.
Yep.
Wait, we're paying them, but they're not paying us?
That is the agreement that was previously decided upon due to our taxpayers paying an ambulance tax.
And that's when it was North Flight, not MMR, and MMR served.
Well, I think it was ba, it was for our taxpayers. That was a practice that started before.
Oh, so it's only.
It, it's only if the taxpayer brings us there in those bill.
Okay.
Then you pay them.
Then we pay it.
I understand. I, I know some of those circumstances. Okay.
We've had those conversations.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay setting this for public hearing at the September, whatever it is, meeting.
Go ahead, Mindy.
I'll support that, but I have a question. So does that mean we still get a run fee off that?
We will not make money off of that, no.
We never, if we go into Garfield or Acme?
If we do, yes, we get.
We still get a run fee, whether it's a hundred and fifty bucks or.
Correct, we still do make money off of their residents.
Okay.
We still bill them, correct.
We bill them.
Receive reimbursement.
We do, we.
Of some point.
Okay.
We're not making money by any means.
It goes through a normal process, so.
It's not, it's, it's not that we aren't getting anything for it.
Correct.
We just aren't getting what we spent on it.
Correct.
Okay.
Be September thirteen.
So there's a motion by, I think there was a motion by Cortade and support by Walters to move the East Bay ambulance budget as presented with a point-nine-four millage to a public hearing in September. All in fa, any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by no? Okay, thank you very much.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Nick, I appreciate all of the work. And I know Acme Township does as well, too. Chief Parker and Assistant Chief Posey, got it right that time. So next we have on our agenda, the Metro's two thousand twenty-two budget. If you gentlemen will just kind of walk us through that, and this was approved by the Metro Board.
Correct, at the Board, on, Board meeting again, July twenty-seventh, Metro Board approved resolution two thousand twenty-one oh-eight, and it's this budget we have. So I'm coming here today just to give you a quick preview of it. I know you have to take this to a public hearing. I have with me Tony Posey, who's my assistant chief. He's a township president and a fifteen-year veteran with the department, so we're glad to have him, and he can help explain some questions. Pretty much, the budget before you is, is inflationary. The appreciation in the townships pretty much pay for that. However, we, like everybody else, and the discussion you had earlier with the ambulance, we're all having difficulty with staff, finding staff, keeping staff, making sure that we retain our staff. So if you look at the Metro budget, you can see our timeline, and so we, we brought it to the Board in June. We had a couple of budget workshops, late June, early, and late July. The Metro Board approved it, Robin had it to all the townships by the end of July. I'm taking this, the roadshow, as I call it, on East Bay tonight. I've got Garfield at six, and I've got Acme at seven tomorrow, and then, of course, the public hearings. So if I could turn your attention to the assumptions page, you can see that the townships between twenty-one and twenty-two improved, appreciated almost four percent, which brought in about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that was the appreciation for, the appreciation of those townships pretty much paid for the inflationary prices. We're seeing everything that you guys are from, primarily it's in fuel, we're seeing it in maintenance costs. All of our facilities had to up their rates. It's just an increase all around. Our, our payroll is counting for, you know, close to seventy percent of this budget. That used to be a hundred and forty, and that's why we used to be able to pay cash for it anymore. We can't do that anymore. So this budget right now shows a increase, COLA increase, up to three percent, and we have a wage reopen with the union. So the union automatically, in their contract, are getting two percent, and it's, is there going to be anything above that? And so that is usually decided at a November Board meeting. The Board did commit to a two-and-a-half percent increase, and in November, we'll decide whether it's going to stay at two and a half or whether it could go to three. Also includes some step increases for officers and for firefighters. And what we feel very, very strongly is that this budget also allows us to hire two new, two firefighters, which will balance the shifts at eight, eight, and eight. Tony, you want to discuss that real quick?
Sure. Yeah, so where we're at right now with our staffing model, we have three shifts in Metro. I'm probably, probably giving you some information that you all, most of you already know, but two of our shifts have two, I'm sorry, seven full-time personnel, one has eight. So what we're looking to do is try to balance out those shifts. Currently, our staffing model puts two full-time Metro firefighters in each station, with the exception of Station Twelve. We have one full-timer and one part-timer. And then our second part-time position is at Station One. And that also includes two full-timers in Station Eight and Acme, which is on the ambulance, obviously, for the first sixteen hours and the last eight hours overnight on the fire side of the house. And then, we are also attempting during the summer months to put a part-time personnel, a part-time firefighter on Station Nine in East Bay, however, having a little bit of difficulty staffing that position in summer, just due to the fact that currently we have thirteen part-time personnel in Metro. Of those, nine were regularly scheduled shifts on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. We do have three additional probationary personnel in Metro, which are working out through the ranks. But that's a twelve-to-sixteen-month commitment on their part, and anywhere from seven to eight hundred hours to get them up to speed. So, you know, part-time personnel are very much a part of the model of Metro Fire, but they're just not walking in the door every day, unfortunately. So, the idea of adding the two full-time personnel and rounding out our shifts would balance the load, put another full-time firefighter at Station Twelve, would then move our part-time position between Station Eleven and likely Station Nine and split the load there. So we would, we would use that essentially as a floating firefighter. We realize the need for, for apparatus checks on Station Nine, maintenance to the building. Obviously, you know, having East Bay EMS in that building certainly helps the cause to, to complete tasks in that facility, but we do realize the need to put a firefighter or two inside Station Nine, hopefully, in the near future, around the clock, twenty-four-seven.
Can I ask a question, or maybe it's more of a statement? When will East Bay Station Nine become a priority for staffing? We're adding more personnel to each of the other stations, but we still can't find permanent, even permanent, part-time.
So what I'm looking to do, and what I've proposed to the Metro Board moving forward, is, is building onto that in the two thousand twenty-three budget. And, and my, my model, I guess, for two thousand twenty-three, I know you don't have this in front of you, and I'm happy to share, the Metro Board was presented with this at our last budget meeting. If we move forward with additional full-time personnel in two thousand twenty-three, it would put a full-time firefighter and a part-time firefighter at Station Nine around the clock. That's the ultimate goal for us, is to have three firefighters at Station One, three at Station Eleven, two at Station Twelve, two at Station Eight, and two at Station Nine. That's largely driven today by call volume, and the fact that proximity for Station One to be able to cover the calls in, in Nine, Station Nine's area, I wouldn't necessarily say adequate, but it works today. But ultimately, that's the end goal, is to get all five of our stations staffed, whether that's through the Metro budget or potentially a partnership with the ambulance to put a driver on, on the East Bay.
So then my other half of my question is, you're saying East Bay ambulance personnel pick up the slack on maintenance, on, or doing, doing work on the equipment there for the fire? Is that what I understood you saying?
No.
Okay.
No, them being in the building, they're, they're cleaning the bathrooms, they're helping pull weeds, they mow the lawn. So they're, they're doing their fair share there.
I, I think you and I both remember the same situation, where we had an ambulance personnel fall off a fire truck because they were working on the fire truck, one I'm sure remembers it too. It was a mess trying to break that out, so.
Not really. Metro paid for his work.
Well, agreed, I understand, but it was, I mean, I don't think you guys asked them to do it. It was probably done voluntarily, but I just wanted to make sure that that separation is still identified.
Yeah, so the model today is largely different. East Bay EMS personnel do not respond on Metro Fire apparatus. They don't. We, I, we take our personnel from Station One, they go out to do vehicle maintenance checks, run the equipment weekly. There, there is that separation there. When I say that I'd be taking care of it day-to-day at the fore, it's not.
Thank you for the clarification.
That wages and benefits also includes a longevity and incentive for part-timers. So, one of the things right now is part-timers are at sixteen, fifteen ninety-eight an hour. And so we want to find a way to bring them up to what a topped out, to what a topped out fire. out firefighter is. So right now, a topped out firefighter in Metro is $1996 an hour. And so with this program, and again, it's a way, it's a way to try to keep firefighters is to, you just don't throw, you know, 20 or 22 bucks an hour at them. You know, there's a commitment when they're here. So what we're looking at doing is if you work more for us, then we're going to bring you up faster to that top rate. And that top rate will float with the Metro budget. So if, if they give a two, two and a half percent COLA increase, well, that number goes up two and a half. I mean, so we're trying to keep up with, with competition. And granted, our firefighters are all EMTs, they're not paramedics. But with the things that we ask them to do and the call volume, we ask them, we feel that they're, they're worth that, that amount of money. And so right now, also gives some longevity. We've, we've got some of those people, our part-timers, that have been with us for 20-plus years. So we're going to give them some, some increases. So it's a four, it's a four-year step. So if you've been here five to nine years, we're going to give you a step. And if you've been here over 10 years, we're going to give you a step. And then if you work 1,200 hours a year, then you're going to get a step. And when you work the next 1,200 hours, you're going to get another step. So we've got some part-timers that right now would be getting three steps and they're only one step away from top of the scale. And one of the things of just, of paying your part-timers more than your full-timers, that, yes, the full-timers are getting benefits, but they've also made it a career. And you, you, we would have big problems if we're paying our part-timers more money than if we're paying our, our full-timers. So that's what's included in, in that. And, and I do respect, you know, your concern of trying to staff Station 9. And, and it really is located in a great, in a great spot. Station 1 was, just picks up the density and that's where most of our calls are, is, is in that Station 1 area. And Station 1 does, you know, go into Garfield Township over to La Frayner. So they do, they do go over that way. And then, like I told you last week or whenever we were together, Station 8 does come over and, and covers all the way to Fort Mille and up into Holiday Hills. So moving along, this budget also buys the chief a new vehicle. I can put my hand right up into the rocker armistress and it also would purchase a new squad for Station 1, which is a pickup truck that we run our medicals out of. And then it would also purchase a used rescue truck, which for $150,000, and it would be replacing what we had in the budget, 2024 for 600. We were able to find a rescue truck that's 10 years old, pretty much brand new, and we think that it can do the job for us. So that will reduce a capital purchase down the road. So what we're asking for from the township right now is a .15 increase over the 2021 rate. The 2021 rate, we've held it for the last two years at 2.45. It's, it's $15 on a $100,000 taxable value of a home. It would allow us to hire the two firefighters full-time. It'd allow us to purchase the two, the three vehicles, and it would cover all of our debt payments of the outstanding two equipment loans we have and the station remodel loans that we use to fix the floors at Station 9, fix the floor at 11, and create new, new living space there. I don't think I need to talk anymore about the assumptions in this packet. It just explains the, the amounts that would be spread over the three townships. Like Beth said earlier, the nice part of Metro is it's 2.6 mils. Every township, it's spread over the township. They can come up with how they pay it, but the amount that is, is allocated is based on that. In here are all the line items. We, we can go through them, but they would just been adjusted up or down based on inflation and also based on the usage of those expense items, expense lines from the previous year. Also in this budget is, gives you our debt obligations. And you can see that the debt obligations are on here projected through 2031. And we've got some big things on there, like a new station in Acme and new land for a station in Garfield. Those are some things that we're looking down the road. They have not been approved, but it's something that in our strategic planning, it shows that. You can see that for 2022, on page eight, it lists our existing, no, I'm sorry, it continues the previous page. And then the 10-year plan on page nine just talks a little bit about the amount of money that we see going forward on vehicles, buildings, and land. And then page 10 and 11 and 12 list our existing vehicles and when we think they need to be replaced. And then lastly, our Board asks us to look, on page 12 asks us to look at a 10-year projection on what it would cost Metro, looking at buildings. And that would be asphalt repairs and rooftop units, windows, those types of things. So we're coming to you in this next budget year asking for a .15 increase. With that .15 increase, it also has us using fund balance to the tune of...
That's $54,000 or...
We would be using...
384,000.
Oh, 384,000. Yep, 384,000. Which still keeps...
What page is that on?
Five.
Well, it's not, it's not on...
151 of ours, isn't it?
So it would be on...
That number is the net revenue over expenditures on page five or 141, whichever page number you want to go by.
Thank you. There it is.
The one highlighted in yellow.
Yellow, yeah.
That I didn't read because it was highlighted.
In yellow.
Thank you.
Okay, I see. Trashed the numbers and wrote it.
That's fine.
Here's where I was looking at it.
Okay. Two places.
I'll get it right tomorrow night.
So we're in your practice run?
Thank you. Tracy.
It's okay.
So that's our presentation to you tonight. We'll be back in September to answer any questions tonight or give us a call, give me a call, or Tony a call, or Robin a call within the next month.
Do any Board members have any questions?
I see that you have a resolution in here. Should that wait for the public hearing?
Uh, I think we can probably wait for the public hearing with that one. That's what we usually, that's what we usually do.
It's understandable that Robin would be...
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't like raising taxes, it's pretty much, the increase is, is labor. And we're, we're struggling much anyway else. We should go out and find more, more part-time. Love to. And we have some nice young men and women that are coming on board. It's, we're sending them to fire school, we're sending them to medical school. It's about an 18-month. And then we're trying to keep interest for 18 months. So we try to get them to get their medical license first so that we can at least put them on the street and get them, get them excited and we actually can pay them something. We've, they've accelerated fire school this year, so it's going to be done in four months, instead of six months now. Again, trying to, to speed things up. And I'm not sure how, and that's going to be a hybrid. It's going to be part of, it's going to be online and some is going to be in-person. So it's trying to find the balance of trying to speed, speed up education.
So I want to thank Chief Parker and Assistant Chief Posey for their work on the budget this year. They did really an excellent job. We had some good meetings at Metro going over the budget and the reasons for the millage adjustment. And I think, as you can tell from the Metro approval, that they're warranted. So with that, I guess I would seek to have a motion to approve going to, notifying for a public hearing for the Metro budget at 2.6.
So move forward.
Or...
Motion by M. Cortez and support by Lyle. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Thank you very much, Chairman.
I appreciate your input.
Okay, with that, we have the last two pages. On pages 19 and 20, you have the budget for the CPOs. That is listed at .26. And I had thought about reducing that, but just went ahead and left it ride right now. It's .26. But we can do whatever the Board's pleasure is. We are showing that we have, we run about $70,000. If you remember, a few years back, we, we intended on using a slight bit of fund balance every year, right? And that's why you'll see the requested budget is 11,000, using the fund balance about 11,000. Are there any questions on the line items or the amounts for the Fund 207?
Make a motion that we move forward with the police budget for 2022 as presented to the public hearing in September.
At .26?
At .26.
Okay. Motion is made by S. Cortez and supported by Bartlett. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Okay, motion passes. And with that, we count to the budget amendments. And Mindy, if I can find them in my packet.
How can your support packet be scattered in there?
Yeah, I moved it to my, I put it in my original packet. So give me just a half a second here. But did you have a question on a specific one, Mindy?
Um, no, there's just a lot of them, so I thought I wanted to...
Go over them?
Yeah, let's, if you would, especially there's a lot of stormwater stuff on here.
So the stormwater is, let me just, let me just share with Tracy there for a second if I can.
Yeah, if I could find it.
Oh, okay. I'll share with Sue. Okay. So Sue and Tracy and I have gone over these already, so it's, so it starts with the budget amendment 07. And that stormwater expense, we are clearing that out because that is paid through the escrow fees right now. So we're clearing it out of the general funds and the escrow fees.
Okay.
And let's see, number eight, that was simply the HVAC replacement that we recently had that was the emergency repair. That actually should end up being all covered primarily by insurance, but we don't know for sure if it's been approved. And so the capital exterior building that we had in for $25,000, that was, that's the island up front and the landscape engineer to design something and then also incorporate with the library. I did get a landscape engineer to take that on the beginning of the season. He has not had a chance to, I mean, that's a pretty smaller job for him. And as I contacted him in the midpoint of the summer and he said, I'm so sorry, we've just been booked. And I said, listen, don't worry. He said, I'll get it to you in two weeks. I said, don't worry about it because I can't bid it out. We couldn't get landscapers for some tree work we were doing. So I said, yeah, I said, don't worry about it. Just get it to me by the end of the season so I can bid it for next year. So that is budget amendment 08. 09 is just because of additional employees for the HSA. 10 is basically looking at the 101. We really don't have a tremendous amount of legal that goes under Township Board. As you know, we've had some issues that we've been dealing with in planning and zoning some developments. And so really, that's where the legal is hit. So I've just shifted some of those funds over to accommodate where we're really experiencing those expenses rather than where they were budgeted. 2021-11 is, I spoke with Mount Holiday and asked them if they were going for a grant this year. They are, but it will be the fall one, so they'll put in in December. That doesn't get paid until the next year. So I just cleaned the budget up with that one, basically. And let's see, there's still a remaining amount in there because there was a grant award. But, um, let's see, 12 is in planning and zoning. We're not replacing that intern and just adjusting for the cell phones for the zoning administrator. And then in 13, uh, oh, these are, these are Fund 210. So these are ambulance ones. This is, the first line is adjusting for that delivery of the ambulance happening next year. And then as, as Nick mentioned, we've experienced some higher cost in medical supplies and some vehicle maintenance and then also a new employee is that last line, the HSA deductible. So in just...
So with the capital outlay of the ambulance going into next year, it's still in this year at $289,000, isn't it?
Hmm, you know what? You're correct. That one should be, actually, we should decrease it.
The one that was in the original packet doesn't have 13. The smaller packet has 13.
Doesn't have 13. So we should be going down on that one. We'll make an adjustment to that. It should go down to, we're leaving about $29,000 in there, is it 21,900?
21,900.
21,900. So probably, I would say, Mindy, we would take that down to 25,000.
Okay.
And then, which would be the adjusted budget at 25,000. And so we would take that down by 275. So we can make that adjustment on that.
So now is Roland a fund balance to then be used next year?
Yep, exactly. Exactly. Did you get that adjustment, Ann?
Okay, what?
So...
That's a no.
After two hours, I kind of went.
There's a budget adjustment 13.
Yes.
And that will be adjusted to show capital decreasing by 275 for a, a net amount of 25,000. Does that sound right, Nick?
I'm on what page?
I don't know how we got the 11, do you?
Well, we, what was the deposit that you put on the ambulance? It was 21...
21,900.
Yeah.
So you need to leave, well, that's already been expensed.
Yeah, that's why she's leaving the 25.
25.
Yeah, so that still gives you a few thousand if you have something else that comes up.
I don't think we have anything else capital-wise, do we?
Oh, this is a whole different packet.
Well, you'll know and it'll come with the budget adjustment if there is.
There's a few deposits made that I would consider.
There is.
So I make a motion to accept the budget adjustments BA 2021-07 through BA 2021-13.
As amended, right?
Hmm?
As amended.
As amended.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion by S. Cortez and support by Walters to accept the budget amendments as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Okay, motion passes. With this, we will come to our last opportunity for public comment. And I don't want you three to rush, but you can come to the podium. I do believe you are all three East Bay residents as well, so very proud to say that. Fantastic. Okay, seeing no public comment, seriously, right? Seeing no public comment.
They want to go home.
If there's no objections, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.